Well, do.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy June. Happy another rainy day. Welcome to the June 3 meeting of Village of Amerenek Zoning Board of Appeals. The will be the first items will be public hearings. If you wish to speak, let Amber know, and you will be given the ability to speak. All right, the first item on the agenda is case six S P twenty thirteen five oh four, the pork, the parkway application to amend and renew a special permit.
So at this point, should I say that I'm recusing?
Yes.
I am.
Could raise your hand, click the raise hand feature. I can promote you to speak. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Greta. What were you finished? What you were saying? Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna say that I'm recusing from this matter. I'm a member of the club, and therefore I think it's appropriate for me to not participate. So I will now sign, not sign off, but I will get out, get off the camera and mute myself.
Okay, did you find the applicant, Amber?
Yes. So if you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, my name is Kami Tobias. I am a member in a board director for the Shore Acres Point Corporation, who is the applicant, and also on the call is Mark, who is the president of short of the applicant Shore Acres Point Corporation. But I would you like me to begin our presentation?
Please.
Okay, so we are just requesting a renewal of our previous approved previously approved special permit and also an amendment to four conditions on our special permit. The four amendments that we are seeking as part of the conditions are is one, an extension of our renewal period, which is currently every three years to every five years. We are seeking to increase our maximum number of SAPC sponsored events per year that last inside the clubhouse until 1:00 AM from five events per year to five to seven. We are also requesting an extension of our maximum ending time for member sponsored events on the weeknights inside the clubhouse from ending time going from nine PM to ten PM. And then the we're the last thing we're requesting an extension of our ending time for claw SAPC sponsored outside events from nine PM to ten PM.
Excuse me a second. This is just to clarify. It says member sponsored event inside the clubhouse. You also want to extend the outside the clubhouse time?
Yeah. Yes. So we are currently under a condition on our permit. If you look at our two thousand eighteen approval on under section C, it's the big letter C lowercase b. It says that no outside organized events are permitted after nine PM. We're requesting that that time be extended to ten PM.
Okay. So having been on the board on pre at least once, probably more than once when this was here, I recall there being a lot of concern about neighbors with respect to the noise. So my question for you is, tell me about, and don't tell me about what happened in the last year, because nothing happened in the last year. You didn't have events. So what happened the summer of wait, this was last year was twenty twenty would have been the summer of twenty nineteen. Tell me about the summer of twenty nineteen. Did you get complaints? Did you have problems with the neighbors?
In the summer of two thousand nineteen, I believe that was actually my first year as a the events chair, and we I received zero complaints from any of the events. I did not receive any complaints from the neighbors, but Mark could add in on this as the president, if he received anything separate from me.
No, I mean, there's there was no complaints where the police were called or anything of that nature. I mean, we 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 have a we have an active community that does get involved in, you know, discussions about about events and, you know, things that happen down at the club. But regards to, you know, police being called because of a of a ruckus event or something going past, you know, certain hours, then then the answer is no.
Yeah, forget police complaints.
Can one person talk? I'm sorry. What was the question?
Um, forget police complaints. Did you have neighbors calling up and complaining about the noise or the traffic?
During summer of two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
I mean, I I off the top of my head, I mean, I can't, you know, specifically, you know, pinpoint one event. What I will say is that due to the times that we have events at the club right now, you know, Sunday through Thursday, it's it's almost impossible for a member to rent the club, because one of the guidelines that we have as set up as a board is that our pool is open till eight PM, and part of our condition of our special permit is that we can only have member events inside the clubhouse till nine PM. So literally, that's one hour that a member can have an event at the club. So it's almost possible to rent the clubhouse.
If I could just add to, if I could just add to Mark's, um, he's talking about the minute for the members sponsored inside the clubhouse. The outside part, we are actually only requesting for board sponsored events to extend the hour for board sponsored events, not for member sponsored.
Do you have any limit on the number of outside events that you allow? It could be every night?
So we we have a no limit on the outside events going to nine PM, but as part of our amendment, we requested for five SAPC events per year that can go to ten PM.
I'm sorry, I know that there was a certain number inside the clubhouse. You're only asking for five outside events that could go till ten and the rest?
That are sponsors.
Yes, yes.
What about the member sponsor? You're saying that's the club sponsored events. What about a member sponsored event?
We we are not trying to change that to where member sponsored events, they still have a condition that they end at nine PM.
I was not on the board when the resolutions happened before, but I've been on the board for some other clubs and also some eating establishments. And I was surprised to find that there is no restriction here about music or amplification outside, that there's conditions placed on when you have to close the windows and doors inside, but there's absolutely not no mention of what you're permitted to do outside. Do you in your, and that's why I was taking a look at your your rules too. Do you allow music or amplified sound microphones, people to talk outside at your outdoor events?
No. So what I would say for member sponsored events, we do not allow for amplified noise in regards to.
Amplified music doesn't have to be noise, any amplified sound.
Exactly. Same.
And what about member sponsored events? You you have amplified sound outside for members? I'm sorry, the club sponsored.
Okay, yes. Sorry, Mark, what were you saying?
So member events, there's no amplified music outside of of the outside the walls of the that was one question.
The club sponsored events outside.
Yes. So as part of our outside organized events as being part of the club, we are seeking for approval of amplified. I mean, it, I guess my question to you is, what do you consider amplified? Is it like using like the speakers and stuff like that?
This is I could just continue.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
What we've done at other for other clubs when they've renewed their special permits and for restaurants who have outdoor seating, we don't allow any amplified sound whatsoever outside. We allow what I remember being consistent, so everybody's created fairly is music, acoustic music up to a certain time, and even that must stop, say, at ten o'clock. It's either nine or ten o'clock, and never ever amplification, because that's what really impacts, you know, groups outside of your space.
So I would say that the what we're seeking, it would be consistent with that in the aspect of just having outside club sponsored events where we maybe have like acoustic music. I mean, so but I hate to say non amplified, because if let's say if we had like an acoustic band out, I don't know where.
Yeah, that would see that really troubles me. I think it's first of all, it's not being fair to how we've what we the conditions we've placed on other clubs and other social gathering spaces. And to me, amplification is is immediately something that impacts neighbors. So I have a real trouble to not putting a condition in that you have nice quiet events outside, but without amplification. I'm less concerned as long as you close windows and doors inside, less concerned about how late they go, as long as you're careful about closing windows and doors. And so it doesn't have that much impact to neighbors, but I'm very concerned with any kind of amplification for events outside. Why don't we see if anyone else from the public wishes to speak on this application? So if you have, if you wish to speak, raise your hand or somehow indicate to Amber that you wish to speak.
Okay, so when you are allowed to speak, if you could please identify yourself for the record.
This is June Ottinger. Do I get to speak?
Yes.
Oh, good. Kami, the about two weeks ago, you had an event that was very much amplified outside. Our home is directly across the water from you. We're on the Crescent, and it was so amplified that I think the DJ was, you know, telling, you know, he was conducting the dancing and the whatever, but he was so loud and the music was so loud that we were watching tennis on TV. We literally could not hear from our house. The the people hit the tennis ball. So when you said that you hadn't had any amplified outside amplified events this year, I believe you're incorrect, because I took my binoculars and I could look across the water and see you were outside, and I could hear it so loud. Well, I couldn't hear my TV, but I could hear you.
It's June. My only question to you, are you sure that it was Shore Acres Point Corporation?
I was pointing my binoculars at your deck outside, and it sounded like it was a prom or a bar mitzvah, because he was talking to the kids. You know, let's go, you know, you could hear the, you know how they do it, and it was, it went on for several hours.
That honestly, that that can't be the clubhouse, because we haven't had any events like it had to have been the
Beach and Yacht Club.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you're right. It was America.
Yeah.
And you're right, you haven't had anything this year.
Yes, thank you.
You have.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear if there was a question.
She muted herself.
No, I just said that in prior years, you have had events that were a little noisy, but you know, if they're at night and it comes across the water, it just is loud.
And that is one of the things that I do want to state that the board in the club recognizes and is very cognizant of and as which we have supported as part of our handbook because of the fact that we understand the sensitivities with noise in the water. But that's why when, I'm sorry, Jude, but when you were stating that there was some event where there was somebody cheering on, I just knew it wasn't on our club, because we would not allow something like that to be outside for a member sponsored event, or even if it was a club event, we would be a lot more courteous than that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to promote the next panelist. If you could please identify yourself for the record.
Hello, are you able to hear me? My name is Tom Kent.
Yes, we hear you.
Hi, I live at four ninety Bleecker across the water from the clubs, Amerenek, and also Shaw Acres. And we have had occasion, and I'll just back up what the previous speaker said, of just having tremendous noise, not only from music, but of all from very enthusiastic MCs and so forth at these events. And I just don't see any way that that amplification is going to work out. We've seen that in everybody's enthusiasm, things get very loud and whatever may be written in a book. It seems to me I would I would concur with the board member who spoke in the earlier, Ms. Jürgen, I believe, that amplification is just a problem, particularly with the, you know, going across the water here. Because of the waters, as if, you know, we're at the event, we get everything except the door prices. So I would be would be pleased if the board would not allow amplification outside. Thank you.
Before we continue, I have a question, because I'm very confused about something. I'm looking at the special permit that was granted the last renewal, and I'm looking at what you request, and I don't see any request in there for what you've asked for verbally, which is something about outdoor events and amplification or an extending the time. So could you please go explain?
Where that
No. Better what you're asking for with respect to outdoor events?
So
I'm very confused.
Yes. So I feel like it's kind of been exaggerated what we're requesting for right as pursuant to our two thousand eighteen approval. It said we all were seeking to amend is that on the last page, it has that no outside organized events are permitted after nine PM. We are simply asking for it to be extended to ten PM, but only for the board or the club sponsored events would be extended to ten PM.
How many such events take?
I'm sorry, what?
How many of those events, the club sponsored events, take place annually during the week?
During the week?
This is not limited to weekdays.
Yeah, this is per year. We're just asking for five, five per year that could be extended one hour to ten PM. For only
Unlimited numbers that could go till nine, nine. There are events that could happen every night of the week.
Yes, as per the previously approved condition of it, that all events outside can go to nine PM.
Robin, I think there's no request about amplification. I just know that there was no condition in the resolutions that I read having to do with amplification or music outside. It had conditions about inside, but nothing about the outside. I think if I remember correctly, from the last time this was on the agenda, that we felt that five times a year, and since they had to end at nine PM, we were not, I don't think the board was as concerned about it generally. We let restaurants be open till ten PM, and we let them have music. And when we've let clubs and other places have outdoor events, they're later than nine PM. And I think that's the reason for the difference, Meg. As I say, I just remember being on a couple of two, I can think of two clubs that I've I've been on the board for now, where we told them no amplification outside. But again, they were all later than nine PM, but that would explain. Okay.
It was just any time.
What was the original resolution for two thousand thirteen?
Yes, two thousand thirteen.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Yes, so I will promote the next panelist. If you could identify yourself for the record.
Unmute. Hello?
Yes.
Yeah. This is this is Nadia Vala and Pierre Vala.
We residing at five oh seven, the Parkway, our properties are joining the Shore Acres Property Association, the club. We have a couple of comments about the SAP request. First, contrary to most club, the club has no manager. The board is serving as a voluntary basis. And as a result of that, the governance of the board has no enforcement policy. The only way to get the members to know the special permit and the rule and condition of the special permit is through the information from the board. And we've noticed some reluctance from the board to inform the membership about the special permit, especially concerning the special permit condition B, small c, which states that during organized event, and inside the clubhouse, there shall be no outdoor loud music, amplified sound, and no outdoor use of speakers and sound devices, device, and all window shall be shut to prevent noise emanating from the clubhouse. Such information was provided before. Such information is no longer provided. Therefore, we urge the zoning board not to extend the duration of the permit to five years, but to keep it to three years, as it provide discipline and accountability, which the governance of the board lacks. That's my first point. My second point is that we urge the zoning board to maintain the nine PM limit, as this nine PM limit is used as a time to start leaving the premises. And usually, people are leaving the premises after nine, and it can extend to ten and more. So we de facto have a ten PM limit on the event. Thank you for your attention, and I think my wife wants to comment also.
Yes, I would like to add to what Pierre mentioned, that no later than this morning, I sent the following message to the SAPC board. Good morning. I'd like to alert the board about the worrisome situation at SAPC in the evening. I do not know if you realize that SAPC became a meeting place in the evening to young people. Some come with cars, others walking, they meet on the parking lots, pill over on the docks, or the grounds and the deck. Last night, I sent an email to Kami and Mark, who are here, at ten thirty PM, and the ground should be closed at nine PM until June fifteen, as there was loud grow group on the grounds and the deck. But this is not the first time, and the season is only beginning. Best regards. I must add also to answer to Mark that the year, the the previous years, because I'm not the type, and Pierre neither to call the police, we dealt with him directly. That's what he asked us to do. And he said that he doesn't remember having received phone calls. And I think if it was not twenty or fifty phone calls, it was not one. So Mark, sorry, you you forgot how many times you came yourself at night, trying to find the groups. We were making noise, and we were not supposed to be here. And Mark, I want to thank you, because you're a volunteer to all what you're doing, because it's an incredible hard difficult work, but still is happening. Now, I don't even know if the trespassers know that there is a perfume nor a ban on music. In fact, many people I met in the neighborhood do not even know the existence of the special permit, which is publicized nowhere, and is not even mentioned in the copy of the rental agreement, which was sent on June first to the membership. I don't know how this situation could change, as long as there is no one on the spot to enforce the special permit rules. Prior to twenty seventeen, it was part of the duty of the caretaker, but it is not the case anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Oops. Sorry, I think your hand is still raised. So next person is Steve. If you could, please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, hi, this is Steve Light at seven twenty sixth, the Crescent. Chairwoman Kramer and Mr. Newfield, you heard this three years ago, but I think it's worth repeating. I have a strong affinity for Shore Acres and a long history. My family moved there when I was nine. My wife's family moved there when she was three. My father, president of the board, my mother was president of the board. In fact, Trish and I were married at Shore Acres. And now we live across the channel from Shore Acres, and we moved there. You know, we understood the noises that come from the pool and from the docks. And frankly, you know, we enjoy it. But our understanding was that's what it was. And this this special permit creep has become a concern for us. That said, although our home is a few feet beyond the four hundred foot notice, we and our neighbors on the Crescent, who are most affected by Shore Acres, did not receive notice. I was surprised after learn of this this hearing from our friends in Shore Acres. And Mark, you're certainly well aware of my concerns with Shore Acres. And so it wasn't very neighborly. I can only assume you were hoping I wouldn't show up. I'd like to say the comments I'm about to make are supported by Greg and Sue Moeller, who are at seven twenty, the Crescent, Richard and June Ottinger at eight eighteen, the Crescent. I didn't realize June was going to jump on. She must have changed her schedule to do that. Laurent and Carolyn Massart at seven fourteen, the Crescent, Sue McMichael Robertson at seven hundred, the Crescent, and the Oscar Davis Estate at eight twenty four, the Crescent. Oscar may have been noticed. He passed away a few months ago, but he certainly agrees with our sentiment here.
And sorry, what was your address?
Seven twenty sixth, the Crescent. So let me just say that we oppose extending hours Sunday through through Thursday from nine to ten PM. And for the primary reason, I think this was mentioned, but Shore Acres is not and does not operate as any other membership club in the village. Distinct difference is there's no professional management. There's no professional staff on site. Now, I've got a little experience here. I currently serve as vice commander of Marchmont Yacht Club. So I understand club operations, and I understand what it takes to run an event, and I understand how events finish. And without professional management, events would carry on. Shore Acres, a nine o'clock event that's supposed to close or end, you know, it's the cleanup, everything else, it's going to creep to ten o'clock and eleven o'clock, because they're going to continue on the on the back deck, they're continuing in the parking lot. And that's just that noise is just as intrusive as it was when it was supposed to stop at nine o'clock. So the creeping from nine to ten has a much more significant impact on the neighbors. It's really creeping from ten to eleven. I'd make the same argument for the special events moving from five to seven. You know, we were unhappy with the seven. I think one AM is is it's excessive. And could you imagine? Can you imagine? It's basically as someone from, I think, Bleecker said, we are part of that event. And so for the same reasons, you know, those events that can go to one AM to us, that that could have impact to two AM, three AM. And that is actually, that's that's burdensome for the neighbors. I'm gonna make another comment about professional management. June referred to an event that happened three weeks ago. I think it was a graduation party. And you're right, it was at Amerenek Beach and Yacht. It was not at Shore Acres. And literally, our doors were shut in our home, and the glasses on our kitchen table were vibrating from the outdoor amplification at Amerenek Beach and Yacht. I called the club. I spoke to someone at the desk, I spoke to the professional manager who said this event will end at ten. And at ten PM, I wasn't happy until ten. Maybe that's that's a conversation for a different special permit. But at ten PM, the music stops, and this disruption ended. That is the difference between having a professional manager on site and not having a professional manager on site. Next, I'd like to comment on, I think, the bizarre request to increase the special permit from three to five years. A couple of reasons it doesn't make any sense, because that's really the only recourse we as neighbors have, if there are complaints. Mark, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Mark, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, as as Nadia said, I'm not calling the police. I don't want to have a record of calling the police for every time there's there's a disruption at Sure Acres. That's just not what I want to do. And and it's difficult that we have to, there's no one there for me to call that can actually implement change immediately. What we what we believe is is the right thing to do is the special permit three years, possibly less, possibly two, particularly because we don't have three years of data because COVID left the the club unoperational for one year. So there's two years at best. So I guess what we're asking for is status quo. Increasing doesn't make sense, but for the same argument, the time that we have under our belt, decreasing probably doesn't make any sense. I think status quo does make the most sense. I'd make one other comment, and and we keep on talking about door, windows and doors being shut. The special permit now reads windows. I appreciate the board member who kept on saying windows and doors. We request that the the language be changed to be windows and doors. Anyone that's seen the Sure Acres Clubhouse would understand the entire south side of the building has got French doors opening to the deck. That's not true, Mark? Okay.
Oh, there's, there's one set of French doors.
Okay, one set of French doors is enough to keep us up and our neighbors up. So I would respectfully request that that restriction is windows and doors are shut. So there's actually no connectivity between the deck outside and the inside space. And lastly, please, and the the board member who also talked about amplification, that's incredibly important that be specified in in the special permit that there is no outdoor amplification whatsoever, ever. Acoustic, I understand, but no outside amplification. Anyway, well, thank you for your time and consideration.
Anyone else from the public?
I do not see anyone else who wishes to speak.
Does the applicant wish to say anything at this point?
Well, I would just say that the one thing that we request is to make sure that we are not any, like, we're not, I I guess, from Mamarone Beach and Yacht Club, their actions are not conjoined with our permit because we're under two different permits. And so whatever they are doing is has no effect on what we do. And I just found a lot of public comments conjoining them, which I just feel that we're separate. And the loudness of their events is something that we can't answer to.
And the other thing I'd like to just mention to the board is that as of right now, when an applicant rents the clubhouse, they do get a copy of the special permit. So that is something that, you know, is part of our agreement. And every year, we do send out our rules and regulations to the community. Whether or not people read them, you know, that that's, we have no control over that. And we do take an active, you know, part in what happens to, you know, that space. We are a community of, you know, two hundred plus houses and families. And as of right now, you know, those families that pay good money, you know, they they have access to the pool, they have access to the grounds, the parking lot, the docks, the boats, you know, and and for to limit them having access to inside the clubhouse, you know, from Sunday through Thursday for one extra hour till ten P M, you know, I think is is something that is still going to be very restrictive. And I think that it's important that we as the board, you know, act in the best interest of our members to allow them to use a space that they're paying for. And it's not to, you know, say that they can go and have big raucous parties that are going to keep the neighbors up till all hours. And, you know, to, you know, yes, we did have a complaint last night about kids in the parking lot. You know, was it unfortunate? Yes. Was it, you know, beyond our control? Yes. But so we, you know, those complaints do come up, and we we do our best to address them, you know, when and when they, when and where they do come up, so.
When you say it was beyond your control, couldn't someone go out there and tell them to leave because it's private property?
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
And does someone do that? I realize that you're not, you can't, at the end of the day, you can't totally control it. But you can't say, well, they, we don't, they're not part of us, so we'd have no control over it. I mean, you know.
I mean, there's, there's signs that are posted, there's cameras. You know, more than likely, they were, you know, kids of members that lived in our community. So.
I do want to just add that we have a onsite groundskeeper that still lives there. And he is present currently, and we professionally hired him and just renewed his contract. So in regards to follow up on the incident from last night, the groundskeeper will be informed on how to assist us in managing it, people or kids entering the property after hours.
And for the record, for the record.
I'm sorry, Mark, what did you say? Mark, what did you say?
Never mind. It's not important.
Okay. Anybody else from the board?
Yeah, I have a few questions. There was much made by, several people commented on the fact, the lack of professional management or the lack of, if you will, as the chair talked about, enforceability mechanism. So you have an onsite manager. Is that someone who's there all the time, or is that someone who just works there?
He lives there.
He lives there. He's he's a caretaker.
Part of his function to to oversee and enforce the rules?
No.
It's not. Okay. So then how how does, I think you need to be able to address how that works. How you you can, because it's it's been raised by some people that there's no enforcement mechanism because there's no one there to police it.
So he enforces from a security standpoint the grounds. He's not there.
Security aspect. This would be if somebody remained in.
Sorry. Okay, please, continue with your question.
No, you continue with your.
No, 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 please, go ahead.
I'm done with that question. I'll go to another one if you want. Um. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to my class question?
No.
Has there been any outside music at any events in the past, well, I guess, since the last renewal?
No.
No.
I'm sorry?
No, there has not been.
Is there any restoration or construction work being done at this time or proposed at this time as well?
No. The right, we're, I take that back. I I stand corrected. We're, we're working on our small pool right now to bring it up to to get it ready for the season.
So how would you propose to address the the issue of no one being there to enforce matters when you have events at the club in the evening? There is no professional management there. And your onsite person is not charged with that responsibility.
I mean, it it hasn't been an issue in the past where member event is going excessively late past their, you know, time that they've set. Members can have events on Fridays and Saturdays till twelve P M. At twelve P M, we expect and we know that those parties are done at twelve o'clock. We sit on a deposit. If there's a problem, if there's a concern, you know, the deposit is held.
And in addition to that, part of the rental contract states that you have to be completely removed. Everybody is gone from the property by the the maximum time. It is not end of time. It is little, and nobody should be on the property at that point.
So after the hours in place that are in place now, it's your understanding and position that that is when not cleanup starts, but closure is done. Everyone's off.
Yes.
So.
Go ahead, David. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, no.
I, I think the same thing. So you can finish up with your question and then I'll go.
Yeah, that's one else. So what time are people who who are having these events told they have to end their event by?
Well, we don't tell them when they end it. We just tell them when, at the time when everybody should be off the premises. And it should be cleaned and closed.
And what is that time?
Well, it depends on if we're talking about the club sponsored events or the member sponsored events.
Well, do both.
Which night?
We, Friday and Saturday night give me the answer to both.
So on Friday and Saturday night, right currently, for club sponsored events, we have to end at one A M for a maximum of five times a year. For member sponsored events on Friday and Saturday night, we, it has to be completely ended by midnight. And for weeknights, member sponsored events must end by nine P M. And for clubhouse sponsored events, sorry, it's ten P M.
So you tell everybody that if the time, for example, is midnight for an event to end, that at midnight, no one can be left on the premises. Everyone's got to be gone?
Yes, that's in the rental contract.
Okay, and let's assume somebody, whether it was a Sure Acre sponsored event, but I'm less worried about that because presumably there's enough Sure Acres. But on the other hand, they may people who don't care. I don't mean to imply that anyone doesn't care, but they're busy enjoying it. Somebody's there at two A M because they don't end the event. That means that if they have to be off the premises by the hour given, that means the event essentially has to end at least an hour before to allow time for cleanup, for people to to stop the event, say goodbye and and move out, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, one could assume that, sure.
Okay, but there's nobody there to make sure any of this happens, correct? You're just relying on the good faith of everybody.
I would just want to add to that, for club sponsored events, we have board members there. And the events that go until one A M as per the previous approval, which have a maximum amount per year, those events are put on by a board director, the events director, myself. And board, other board members are there, and so we are there to enforce our rules. But for member sponsored events, that in the essence is where we have our rental contract to govern that. So if you're asking if we go, we're there present at each of those, then no, we're not always there. But we we actually hope that members being part owners of the club would have the respect and know not to lose their deposit of five hundred dollars by going past the restrictions.
Well, you wouldn't know if they violated it to take their down payment unless they turned themselves in or someone else did, right?
Well, we're talking about, if we're talking about time violations.
Yeah.
Yes, you're you're absolutely correct, David.
Yes.
You're not going to go to the video and all of that, are you?
Oh, we have.
We have.
Oh, we have.
I understand, but you, okay, I'm, I'm, all right.
Oh, we, we actually went to the video for last night's occurrence. And and I would like to add that to the fact that the grounds just have video and audible recordings of the premises at all time.
Anybody else on the board have any questions or anybody just last comments by anybody from the public or any questions from board members?
It's like there's someone else who wants to speak.
If you want to speak, please, like, raise your hand or something, or in the chat, I guess, let Amber know you wish.
I I do have a question, and I don't know if this is for the chair or council. So people who have already spoken, are are they given an opportunity to speak again? I'm going to take you in order of appearance. If you could please identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, I'm Pam Yurger, and I live at four ninety also. I think what I'm hearing is that something that causes me concern is that I would hope there would be consistency between the permits in a given area so that if Sure Acres was allowed to stay open till ten, then that would mean that Mamarone Beach Club would be also able to stay open until ten. And quite frankly, from my perspective of living here four years, they're the problem for us in terms of noise. Not to say that there isn't noise coming from Sure Acres, but I live a little bit farther down, so it's not directly across from me. But that would be my concern is that if we allow one to go, then we're going to have to allow the other one to go. And we on this side of the water have a real problem with what's been, what we've had to deal with from the Mamarone Beach Club. That, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Did you say there were other people? Abby, Amber?
Yes. Please identify yourself.
Hey, this is Steve Light again, seven twenty-sixth Crescent. I just want to be very clear that I am not confusing Sure Acres with Mamarone Beach and Yacht in any way. The the issues I'm speaking about are specific to Mamarone Beach and Yacht. And I appreciate the questions of the board sort of zeroing in on the lack of management and oversight and making that point. One point I'd like to make is, it was spring of two thousand nineteen, I believe. It was, I believe, it was a graduation party. It may have been the French American school that you did at Sure Acres. It was an afternoon party. And I was actually out on the water coming in on my boat. And I turned in disgust to look at Mamarone Beach and Yacht because of that, you know, considering it was coming from there, but it wasn't. It was coming from Sure Acres. And it was a party, I believe, there's amplified music inside and with that one set of French doors opened. And it was disruptive all the way out to the entrance of Mamarone Channel. So I just want to make that point. And and did I call the police? Absolutely not. But but it is a disruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do not see anyone else with their hand raised indicating that they wish to speak.
All right, board members, do you have any more questions for the applicant?
No.
If someone, if someone want to make a motion to close the hearing, then?
I'll move to close.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Meg. So on closing, Abby?
Yep.
Dave?
Yeah.
Meg?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So this public hearing is closed. We are unlikely to discuss it tonight. So at the next meeting, we will discuss it.
Hey, Robin, I'm really sorry. I just see now someone else looks like they have a comment in in our chat box. It looks like someone was just trying to comment right before we closed, so I don't know.
Oh, are there, oh, June Ottinger? Or is that somebody different? Looks like she was looking to speak. Well, board members, if you want to reopen the hearing or since you spoke already, somebody make a, somebody offer a thought. I I'm okay either way.
And I actually don't see June on list of attendees. I think she spoke earlier.
And she put something in the chat, so.
Okay, then, since she isn't speaking up now, we'll assume she's spoken her p, her piece. And it's been closed, so we can move on. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is calendar number two, case number twenty-one, S P twenty nineteen, six ninety Mamarone Avenue, for renewal of a special permit and extension of time to file a laid up renewal application.
So if the applicant could raise their hand so that you can be promoted to panelist, thank you.
Can you all hear me and see me?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Hello, my name's Matthew Gorni for Maple and Rose at six ninety Mamarone. Apologies for my voice. I was sick the past couple of days, so I sound a bit froggy. But we are seeking a renewal of our special permit that was issued originally June twenty eighteen, and then we revised it just to extend the hours slightly on a few days in September twenty nineteen. We're not seeking any. We're not seeking any changes. We've had, you know, I think everything has gone very well. The parking situation has gone very well. Still, the trade off between residents and customers has gone well, and there's still a lot of unused street parking in front, which is, you know, was one of our major topics of conversation the last time. We've, we've actually had no special events that we were allowed to have, unfortunately. But everyone wants to book us for bridal showers on a weekend brunch, which ends up being cost prohibitive. So that part of it, we haven't experienced yet. And that's about it. I don't know of any noise complaints or, you know, parking or traffic complaints so far. So I think that's all I have.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to address this application? I have a question. Why did you file your application late? You had, you know, you're supposed to file like application to extend, so I'm curious, just since you need an extension for a time, so why was it filed late?
I honestly didn't, I didn't know the timing of the four months. I don't even know where to find that, to be honest. I thought it would be like on the application itself. I actually called in the beginning of January, was told to file a regular building permit first to be rejected, to then do the special permit process. So we did that. That wasted a few weeks' time because then I got mailed back the original. And then I had to go back and do the whole thing again and get it all motorized again. And we submitted in, in February. And yeah, so it just got delayed a little bit further, just have a misunderstanding there. But just a little bit behind and it's been a wild, crazy year for restaurants. So I'm kind of behind on everything these days.
So you actually submitted your application in February? We just got you on the, no, is that correct? Is that what you said?
Yes, I think I, we were trying to get on the May meeting. Unfortunately, I only was given one business day of the information to post all of our signage and mailing materials. So I couldn't get that done. So I asked to push to this meeting.
Thank you. I think the only comment I have about when we look at your resolution, it looks like there's been no, no problems and no comments and everything's going well. It's just that you asked for the extended hours and as you said, you weren't able to meet special events. So I'm not sure about the length of time because it's been during COVID, so we don't really know the impact of those changes because it was a special period of time. So I'm just thinking of the, of renewing it for a certain amount of time. I just wanted to bring that comment up.
If I can respond, we had, so that was September 2019. We had extended our hours in, you know, after that for dinner. I don't think it was for special events, nothing changed with the special event stuff. And again, we haven't done that. The change there in September was for regular business hours till 10 PM on Fridays and Saturdays, I believe.
You implemented that in September of 2019?
Right. And then, you know, since, since we reopened from, we closed from, we closed April through August last year, when, since we reopened, we've limited our hours slightly just due to volumes and, you know, the expectations of customers. Most, you know, most of dinner was takeout again, so we're still kind of seeing that and we haven't reextended them again. But we did get some small sample period of the 10 PM from September until March or probably February, because March, you know, the restrictions were put in place, but which, you know, went well. It was all, it was just 10 PM inside.
So you're not seeking to extend those hours, correct?
I'm not seeking to change anything from the September resolution, right?
Excuse me. Okay. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
I just want to confirm, there was a, I guess, October 2019 building code violation, and I just wanted to confirm that it's been remedied, was part of the package.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but.
I believe we had talked about that, right Frank? That there was something to you with the dumpster or something. I think Dennis had brought that up before and it sounded like that was.
The violation had to do with, it says FDC cap missing. So it has to do with testing and maintenance under the fire code. So. Was not inspected at the.
Is this particular to Maple and Rose or do you think it's for the landlord's building? Could it be for?
It was probably for the landlord. That was the FDC sign on the stand pipe that was missing, that was since put back or put up, I should say.
So it's been remedied?
Yes.
Okay, and that is most likely the building, not the the stand pipe is a building obligation, not it, unless the tenant.
I wasn't aware of it, but yeah.
I mean, this seems pretty straightforward to me, so.
It says that one of the requirements of the special permit was that upon renewal of the special permit, a log of special events conducted at the premises shall be submitted to the board. Do you have that?
I don't. We haven't had any special events.
Okay, well, that makes that a little moot.
That solves that. Yeah, like, I mean, we wish to, it's just, you know, we've become more of a breakfast brunch place and most people want to book us for a shower or something on the, on the weekend. And we, you know, we, unfortunately, it's cost prohibitive for us and for them to close the whole restaurant for a brunch on the weekend, so.
Okay, if nobody else has any questions, so we want to close this application?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, actually. We're not closing the application, but closing the public hearing. I make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Abby?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So this public hearing is closed, as you heard. We probably won't get to it tonight, so it won't be till the next July meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item, calendar number four, which is case number three, A 2021, 732 The Parkway. It is an area variance. Is the applicant here?
Robin, I'm going to recuse myself from this also. The applicant is a neighbor of mine.
Ah, okay. I guess living where you do is a problematic problem for these things.
I don't know, Greta.
All right, so I'll be back.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jaclyn Tyler. I am the architect for this project and I believe that Sarah is here. Yep, there she is. Sarah's with us as well. She is the homeowner. We are in front of you tonight to request relief from an existing garage that we will be raising the height of the existing roof as it currently sits. Can I, am I able to screen share? Okay, terrific. Okay, so I've pulled up the photos. So as you can see here, we have an existing garage in the, I would say, the rear portion of the property. The driveway comes in from sound view and the existing residence is here on the left. The driveway is on the right side, which leads back to this existing garage. As the existing garage sits currently, I'm going to flip over to here, you'll see that the existing garage does not meet the current zoning requirements. So along the side here, you can see we're just over, so there's a 7.65 at the rear and 7.15 setback at the front edge, not meeting the required 10 foot side setback for the existing garage. So the work that we're proposing is to raise the existing roof. And the purpose behind that is right now, you can see from the existing garages that we have two overhead doors along the front face of that, which that permits a post to be located in between. So the header over top of that overhead door can be shallower. We're introducing a new single overhead door, which means we have to eliminate the post in between the two doors. And therefore, we're proposing raising, switch over to you. I have a blue line on here so you all can see. So this is the existing roof line now in the blue, as you can see. And so the header, we raised it up to accommodate the header over to the side portions of the existing two sidelines, sidewalks.
When you raise it up, the, I was just trying to understand this. When you raise it up, you raising the, is the roof the same? So the roof, the actual physical roof extends over the garage building right at an angle and extends out.
Correct. Yeah, so the existing pitch remains as it currently is.
But I'm not interested in the pitch. So it extends out. So when you measure the distance, so when the distance is measured between the garage and the rear lot line, right? Wasn't that the rear lot line?
Side lot, the side.
You're measuring it from the building to the wall, not the top, not the roof line, whatever the word is, and I don't.
Correct. Yeah, the eve.
Not from the eve to the line, correct?
Correct. We're measuring it's from the footprint of the building, not from the eve.
When, when the roof, when the building gets higher, you're just raising the top also. It doesn't.
Exactly. Exactly. So this eve line here on the side will remain consistent.
And so when it goes up, it's going up vertically, it's not.
Correct. Yes, we're not, we're not proposing to increase the footprint at all along the side.
We are looking about the footprint. I'm looking about the.
Right. When I say footprint, I'm referring to the over, the over. So this dotted line here is the existing edge. And that's going to remain as is for the, for the, for the roof footprint, not the building footprint. And then the only roof, the roof revisions have been kept to the front side. So there's no setback here that's impacted. And then we have a small portion over on the side for the entry door and the passage door into there.
How far over is the garage from the sideline on your drawing there?
So currently, the survey has seven point, it's too different. The front side is 7.15 and the rear port corner is 7.65.
I just point out just for you that we don't have a survey, we have a survey that's 32 years old and a purported certification by somebody who's not a surveyor saying that it accurately represents the current status. And I think we don't.
Correct. So the homeowner, this property has been in the family for many years. The current homeowner, it was their in-laws. And so they, there's been no work on the, on the existing garage from the time that the survey was completed.
Right, but we do require surveys, I think, that are what, two years old? I don't have the rule in front of me.
One year.
One year old, so.
I think the bottom line, unless the vote, the board votes to make an exception, and my concern, it would be if we make an exception here, why not for others? Would be that, just like we require everyone else to get an updated survey that's dated within one year, that you have to get an updated survey and we could not approve this unless and until you have that updated survey.
Are we just having to get the garage resurveyed, not the whole property?
No, we have the property. The code says property. I mean, the requirement isn't the, isn't the, you're not the only one who hasn't done work. It's the requirement that we have.
Can a certified surveyor or engineer confirm that what's there existing is correct, that the survey?
That's, that's doing a new survey. That's effectively surveying the property. And surveying equipment and standards have changed dramatically in the past 32 years. But yeah, I think that if a surveyor looks at it and does the measurements, then he's effectively done the survey, so.
He doesn't have to draw a new survey.
Well, is that, is that something that, since we're not, since the footprint of the building is not changing? And so whatever that dimension, to your point, David, I see what you're saying. So instead of the 7.65 or the 7.15, because of the technology that we have today, that may adjust slightly to read 7.1 or, you know, 7.08, whatever it may be. Since we're not changing that footprint, would it be possible to put that in as a condition to an approval?
No, we, we have never approved anyone for a survey.
I'm sorry?
We don't do that. We're not going to make it a condition. We can close the hearing and leave it open contingent on getting a survey, but we're not going to vote on it without that.
Without a current survey.
I hear you. Right, so we could, we, this could get tabled potentially to next month if we can get the survey completed prior to that.
Yeah, so I would say what you do is we would just adjourn it, leave it open in case there's a change that you want to address for your own sake, because once you close it, you can't. And this way, just leave it open, have the survey brought in, and there'll be no other comment the next month except as the survey. Is that all right with the chair? I don't.
That's fine. That's, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, otherwise, every, every application is going to have the same issue with surveys. It doesn't affect it, doesn't. It's just, it's the right thing.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for us on, on the application?
Anybody on the board? I have none. Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
I have none. It seems like a relatively small.
Is there anybody from the public who wishes to address this application?
I do not see anyone who wishes to speak.
Okay. If, unless one, any other board members have anything further, let us, let us adjourn this until next time on the assumption that the only thing, well, not on the assumption, but, and we'll assume that at the next meeting, the only thing that will happen is you'll submit the updated survey and we can close it then.
Okay, can, Chairman, can you confirm when that needs to be submitted in order to be on the next agenda?
Amber, if you could please tell them.
Well, is there a date that it has to be submitted, Vaughn?
Yes, we've, we have said, the board has said, after getting too many submissions from applicants, you know, two days before, three days before, and I think it was a week before or 10 days. I don't remember. If Amber, if you don't know, then.
So we can confirm this in writing to the, if that is helpful.
Just want to make sure we don't miss that. That's, as long as the surveyor can hit that, yep.
It's going to be something like a week or 10 days. I don't remember exactly.
Okay, we will contact them tomorrow morning.
I believe. Okay, thank you.
We'll get the exact date.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, the next application is calendar number four, case number six, SP 2021, 2A 2021, 1043 West Boston Post Road, an application for a special permit and a variance.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Andrew Spats for the applicant. Going to wait a moment. We have several people on our team that we need to have promoted. Amber, they should be raising their hand, their little virtual hands so they can be promoted. Mouse Club, I have to take roll call. Justin, Brian, Ralph, Amanda, let's see. Amber is Amanda on the email board.
There's an AE who just raised their hand. I'm going to promote them to.
Great, thank you, Amber. And then Justin is the landlord joining us as well.
What is the person's name?
I don't believe so, not at this time.
All right, fine. So I think we have a full ensemble here. Wonderful. Just something, again, I'm just checking.
Who's the landlord?
There's, David Steer to all panels landlord is here.
Is, is David the landlord?
Yes.
Yes, he's the property owner.
Present and accounted for. Very good. And we're all here. Good evening again, Andrew Spats for the applicant for 1043 West Boston Post Road. Chop, I guess this should be our application 2.0. I'm going to speak very briefly and then I'm going to turn it over to the chop team. Just an overview, the applicant seeks a special permit to operate a restaurant with car service pursuant to Article Six, Section 34230A1E, and Article 10, Section 342 dash 67, Section 342 3B12, and Section 342 3B85 of the Village Code. In addition to the special permit, the applicant seeks two variances. One variance would be for parking located within four feet of the side yard. Whereas Village Code, that would be Article Seven, Section 34254B1 requires five feet. It should be noted that the property next door houses a sports club, which is Equinox, which has a huge parking lot immediately budding the applicant's property. And there's currently ample natural screening currently there pursuant to Article Four, Section 34216. The second variance would be for one parking space located within 50 feet of the front street line per Village Code 34254B1. And interestingly enough, I jogged that just about every other day and noticed that there are many other businesses located along Boston Post Road in immediate vicinity. Village Pizza, Boston Market, Mamaronek, Marinerian Group that are all parking immediately adjacent to the Boston Post Road. And again, before handing the presentation off to the chop team, the proposed use, as you know, is in the C1 zone and would most certainly be in harmony with the general health, safety and welfare of the surrounding area by nature of the location. Again, immediate proximity to the proposed establishment, we have Equinox Fitness, American Motel, American High School, Bank of America, Auto Body Shop, Nail Salon, Dry Cleaners, Pizza Deli Establishment. The applicant's proposed use will not create any additional noise, fumes, vibrations or flashing lights to the area. By nature of the business and pursuant to COVID safety precautions implemented will remain in harmony with the general health and safety, welfare of the surrounding area. Again, by nature, the fact that of its location in C1 zone. Moreover, this is an ideal location based upon ample parking onsite accessibility by foot and bicycle. And again, the progressive contactless means for patrons to dine in or receive the order by walking into the restaurant or utilizing the car service, which will be amplified by the team this evening. I think that once we conclude our presentation tonight, Chair and members of the zoning board of appeals, you'll see that the input that you shared with us on several different times we appeared before you during the course of the year wasn't merely academic. In nature, we actually incorporated the concerns and the comments made into what you will hear and see this evening. So without further ado, I would like to turn the virtual mic, so to speak, over to Justin, Amanda and Nick.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. It's great to see you all again. Quick overview here. So obviously Chop has submitted a new application as a restaurant with car service for 1043 Boston Post Road. Nick Marsh, part of our leadership team, went through all the details previously to support that position that the chop operation and concept qualifies as a restaurant, which qualifies as a restaurant because we have waiter service that will bring food to the tables. This is different than the rest of our estate of chopped operations. Be new for Chop Mamaronek. And furthermore, we will offer a car service, which we believe aligns to the code with customers remaining in their vehicles parked in a designated park of the restaurant parking lot. And all of that detail is available in the application we provided. However, at the end of the April meeting, the board highlighted that there were a few items we needed to address, which I've worked with the team to resolve, and we've included this in the updated and new application, which you have. So specifically two items, we've got the size of the parking spaces. So the parking spaces were highlighted, now comply with Village Code 342.3. The term defined as a parking space, all pedestrian parking spaces now reflect nine feet wide by 19 feet deep. And the employee spaces are at least eight and a half feet wide by the same length. And the second piece, the count of parking spaces, we've now clarified, we have provided 22 off-street parking spaces. This is above and beyond the 17 that are required, six for the employees and 11 for the 32 seats. As Andrew mentioned, we've got two variances that were highlighted by the building department that were seeking this evening in addition to the special use permit, the side yard setback, which is currently four feet from the property line. And there's a single parking spot we're asking for that is closer to the property line than allowed by code. I would like to note this additional parking space is not included in the counts I just went over. So this is above and beyond those counts. The purpose of this space is in the rare event that someone's order is not ready when they arrive for car service, we'd like to provide a space they can pull into and a chop team member will run their order out and bring it to them. This space is not intended for everyday guests used to park and go inside. We expect customers to wait here for an estimated five minutes maximum or less until their order is complete and they can be on their way. We've also noted on the site plan that we would like to sign this. So guests know that this is for a car service only. So we appreciate the opportunity to bring this for you again. Again, we, as with all the information we've provided to you before, we believe we make the case for a restaurant with car service and we'd love to take any questions you have at this time.
Questions about the variance for the, the parking space in the front? I don't know that you need a variance because as I'm reading the code, it says, it can't be in the, let me, let me read the code because I looked over it. I thought it was as long, if you can't be within eight feet of the side lot line and you're 50 feet from the, in the front yard. And it looks like that space is at least eight feet away from the side yard. It didn't seem like any space in that 50 yard front yard. It seemed spaces in that front yard that are not more than eight feet away from the side yard. Did I read that wrong?
So the space we're speaking about specifically is at the front. Is it possible that I could do a quick screen share just to highlight?
So, so I understand that's 35 feet. I think I saw one survey from the building to the front. So it's definitely within maybe 50 feet front yard. I got that. But I thought you don't need it because it's not, you can't have it in the front. You can't have it in the front and also be within eight feet of the side.
Got it. So I understand the distinction there. If there's no variance needed and.
Wait, before, if the, did the, can you bring up the copy of your, your drawing, please?
Sure. Absolutely.
Any of those conclusions?
Ralph, can I ask you to share that? Are you ready to?
I was just going to say, Justin, do you want me to share? I will.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I'll read the code as you're getting that up. Shall not be located in any required front yard. And I think your required front yard is only anyway are not within, nor within a point eight feet from any side lot that is within 50 feet of a front street line. So it just seems that if you're eight feet from the sideline, it doesn't matter that you're in the 50. I kind of weirdly written in there.
This is the parking space at this location. It is, I'd have to do a dimension here, but it's more than eight feet. And it is less, it is seven point four feet from the front lot line.
Yeah. So I don't, I think it's less that it's, as I'm reading it, everybody could look at, it's 342 dash 54 B1. And it seems to be that you need those two components that you're in the 50 yard, front yard, but you're less than, you know, eight feet from the side.
We certainly won't disagree with that interpretation if the board is willing to go that way.
I was trying to figure out which space you're talking about. I was, I was really looking. And then the other spaces that are four feet from a side lot, it seemed like you were saying one space was four feet from the side lot. Can you tell me what the other variance is for? Is it one or is it several?
It is.
Would you like to?
I'm sorry. Can you go back? Is that, so just before we're moving, that particular space is how far from the side lot line?
Looks like at least 20 feet.
It just, you could see that it was nine feet for the car service area. And if you, you know, bring that down, that's, that's 10 feet right there. It's definitely more than that nine and a half that's right behind it.
Thirty-six feet. Roughly, that's not an, that's not an exact, you know, dead exact, but it's measured off the PDF.
If I didn't, I didn't read this correctly, please correct me, but I think that it's, that's maybe why you see a lot of spaces in the front yards because it's, as long as it's far enough away from the side yard. And I wasn't sure what, is it one other space that's four feet or several spaces that need the other variance? Could you point out what those are?
These, the existing curb line along this property line is, is four feet right now from the property line and what.
With all these spaces, you're asking for a variance. They're supposed to be five.
We've done is establish a new curb line along the existing curb line there. In one case at this corner, existing curb line is actually slightly closer to the.
Okay. Thank you. I thought I saw, I heard that it was a single space and that confused me. It's not, it's not.
That was one right next to Boston Post Road this year again.
And how far is it from the front, from the street? The one and one?
Point, I think that's seven.
This parking space here, are you asking about?
The one you were originally coming for a variance for.
Oh, this one is seven point four.
And your required front yard is?
Oh yeah, 10 feet.
So it is within the front. But maybe looking in any required front yard. Therefore they need a variance because it's located in the required front yard.
So it isn't about the, okay, so it's the required front yard is seven point five.
Instead of 10. That's the problem. Not that it's too close to the side lot line.
If I just may, I, I have a question as I'm reading that section of the code. The first sentence of that section was unless you have a special use permit or site development plan. I don't know if this board, I haven't dealt with this section since representing the board. But you know, we may inquire whether if you issue the special use permit, whether that applies.
It says, it says a special permit, therefore it seems to allow, I don't think you need a variance. I think you need to include this as a condition of the special permit.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. I think that, I mean, that's what it says. So I don't think you need a variance. You do need permission to have this here, but we can do it in the special permit. Or maybe it's a second special permit. It's a special permit for this purpose. I guess it's a, unless a special permit has first been obtained. So presumably doesn't say a special permit for what? Now I don't think Article 10 has a special permits for this. So I would say that if we include this in the special permit, you don't need a variance, but you do need a.
Approval in the special permit.
Exactly. Specific approval of this in the special permit.
Understood.
And then as we're talking about the site plan, I, I do believe that the, the lot that you're bordering in the rear is a parking lot that's for a multi-residential space. So it's a residential lot?
On the side, on the south side of the property, that would be Equinox with a tremendously large parking lot for Equinox members. And that, and that actually wraps around partly at the rear, that would be the east.
Okay. So in front of it is the residential lot and in between the residential lot and.
I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing. So if I'm looking at this screen, what we are, so at the bottom of the computer, that would be Equinox right there.
And what's the top?
The top. Okay. The top, that would be the mode, I believe that's the.
Pizza motel.
Motel pizza and deli. Yes.
Okay. North, south for sure.
Okay. Perfect. So in the south, I believe part of it is the extension of the Equinox parking lot. And on the other side of it, you're absolutely right, there would be a multifan, that is a condo or apartment complex.
Yeah. Cause I was just looking.
Absolutely. No, you're right.
So then your border, your, you need to be 10 foot back from a residential.
And that.
Instead of seven.
Look at the, the 34254 with the rear.
What are you reading, Meg? I'm sorry.
I'll get, I'll get the code up. Hold on.
Yeah. Cause I'm looking at.
350, Meg, I think you're looking at Article Eight, 34254B1.
I don't see a 10 foot. So I don't see what Meg is talking about a one or two family doing, but this is a multifamily.
If you give me just a moment. Oh, I'm sorry.
It looks to be five feet. The rear, it says the side and rear lots setback for one two family dwelling.
But this isn't.
I'm just reading through it. Whenever an open parking is required, side rear. Talk about screening.
I don't see a 10 foot. That's what, so let's let Meg figure it out what she's talking about.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I thought I had written down the code. All right. I tried to get to that. So if you have other questions, I'm going to be looking this up.
So, so you, so you have this and then the other, and then you want the special permit. Everything else is code compliant, although there was just some discussion about on the other side next to Equinox.
South side. Okay.
Those parking spaces are located. Whatever it is, five feet.
Four feet from the property line.
Or four foot.
It says it has to be with five feet. So they don't.
Sorry. Where are you, what, where are you looking in the code? If you could just give me the number, because it's.
Three 4254. So they have to be five feet. They are in fact four feet. So you do need.
We've provided.
Our second variance request, Chair.
Okay. The five feet are for one and two family dwellings, not for a commercial space.
Right. It doesn't apply. It's not related to this.
But I did find, I'm sorry. I'm going to find it. So I didn't make.
So answering the question that I was asking, so that's, so the first variance we've eliminated because it's got to be part of the special permit. The second variance for all those parking spaces is still valid. And it's like a one foot variance?
Correct. And some areas it's one foot in the, I believe Ralph was saying that in others it's less.
Well, I'm, no, no, I'm sorry. Let me, so what I was saying is we set the curb line at four feet, but the existing curb line in this area here is four foot at this point, but it's a little bit closer at this point. So we're providing about a one foot additional landscape at this point right here. And we're removing this curb line.
And again. I want to point out Chair that there is existing a head screen. And I think it's equally as important that there are one, two, three stalls of parking. Then you actually have the structure of Equinox. So you have parking along the curb. Then you have two stalls of parking in the middle of the parking lot. And then you have the actual structure. So there's tremendous space between our proposed parking and the front entrance of Equinox.
I'm sorry. It's all parking. Equinox is all parking over there. So you're, you're a buddy parking. Understood. So there's the code still, you're right. Okay.
I'm just pointing out that I, it would be consistent with the existing use by its neighbor.
Right. Okay. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Other questions besides, I can't find that code that I was looking for.
Okay. So go ahead, Megan. Well, you want to, why don't you look and we can continue with anyone else and. And meantime you find what you need to find. So we can get that resolved if there is an issue. Is there anybody from the public who wish? Is there anybody from the public who wishes to address this application?
Do you wish me to stop sharing?
I do not see anyone who wishes to speak.
Okay, so.
This is Ralph Perrigan. Do you want me to stop sharing? I just want to know.
No, no, you might as well leave this. This is a good overview of the site, so we know what we're looking at. Um, thank you. I think it's good to have the, you know, the plans right in front of us. Oh, I had a question. This area, talk about it being paved. And I was confused what you were doing with that area.
What area in particular, Chair?
Oh, you can't see my, my, it's my, the front of the, the right of budding Boston Post Road. I, it talked about some area in your application, talks about some area being paved or brick or something. I wasn't sure where that was. I just.
If you can go to the other page that shows our finishes, I think that would kind of describe the area a bit better. There we go.
I think, uh, Ms. Yergin, Ms. Kramer, you're talking about this particularly, uh,
I am not a hundred percent sure, because the application was a hundred percent clear, so.
It's this spark, spark right here, I think that, uh, you were trying to.
And what are you doing with that?
That's the, uh, the car service spot that's going to have a.
You've paved it differently to make it distinct. Thank you. I didn't quite, I was, so I kept looking for it somewhere. There must be something about if they're treating it differently. Okay, it's just for the distinction. Okay, got it now. Again, Meg, do you have your, did you find what you were looking for?
I can't find it. I feel a little under the pressure to try to find it when everybody's waiting. I remember bringing this up in another application too, so, but I will, I will try to find it.
May, I don't know if anyone else has questions. I, I have a play, idea where it might be. Let me look. Um, might be in the requirements, in the tables. So I, I'll look at the table. Well, if you have any other, I will look at the table, Meg. Why don't you continue with your other questions?
Okay, a couple on the site plan I have before we get to other questions. Um, it's, okay, if you could bring up the, uh, uh, site plan with the parking spaces. Oh, there it is, okay. Um, so now, these are now nineteen. I can see you made them nineteen, you reduced the space in between, but it seemed that there were. I'm reading this and you're saying that they're nine feet across. Is that, is that true? The width is now nine feet or two of these are eight and a half and the rest are nine?
So the pedestrian parking spaces are all nine feet. There's a handicap space, which is eight feet. And there are employee spaces designated that are eight and a half feet wide.
Okay, I just asking the, the line of cars along the rear lot line. It's vindicated two are eight and a half and the rest are nine, is that correct?
Ralph, can you zoom in there?
That's what I'm trying, I'm trying to zoom in, yes.
See six spaces, nine feet, or maybe all six are the nine feet width?
All six are nine feet. Where we have the actual room, I'm sorry, Meg, go ahead.
I just wonder, because they used to be eight and a half on your old site plan, and did you make the space wider somehow? I don't understand. I just don't understand how you could fit them all, have an extra six inches for each space when it, I didn't think that that overall dimension changed.
So we have massaged the site plan. If you look in the lower right-hand corner, there's a dumpster enclosure. Our previous plan, which is not part of this application, has shown a larger enclosure. We're proposing to keep exactly the same structure that's there today.
Okay, that's where you got it from. Okay, so right now, the way you have the two parking spaces strike, when I, there's, um, so I guess you're going to have a smaller one. Is there some way to access your dumpster when the people are parked on both of these, uh, both of the spaces that are next to your dumpster area?
So we'll only be doing trash collection at the very early morning, uh, for the collection, so we'll know the parking lot will be largely empty. Plus, those are also signed as employee spaces, so we'll be able to manage that.
I was thinking about actually emptying your garbage in there during the day. I would think as a food establishment, you have bags of garbage to throw out.
We, we, we do this in stages. We've got an interior place that we would stage the trash and pull it out when it makes sense for operation. Most of our folks will be chopping salads for lunch and dinner. So we'll, we'll take it out when it's a, a quiet part of the, of the shift.
Okay, I just, that looked pretty tight to me. And another arithmetic, um, before I thought it was, you had eighteen feet opposed to eighteen feet on the, uh, two lot. And it was twenty-three feet in between. And now it seems that, were they eighteen point five or eighteen? Because now they're each nineteen and you have twenty-two feet. It seems like it should be twenty-one feet in between them.
I, I'm sorry, I got a little lost in the numbers. Can you specifically ask where you're asking for the?
There's, there's, there's some parking spaces along in the middle of the parking lot.
Yep, got it.
And, and they, uh, there's opposing parking spaces along the border of the lot line.
Yes.
And there's twenty-two feet between them.
Right.
On your old site plan, I thought it was eighteen feet long and eighteen feet long, and the space between them was twenty-three. So it seems like this should be twenty-one. I'm sorry.
Uh, what we did, I can answer that. What we did is we actually shifted this curb line slightly.
Okay, okay, because it's missing some other dimensions, so it's, it's not like apples, it's, you can compare.
This is a, this is not a uniform dimension in here, so it was kind of hard to.
Okay.
Okay, I found, I, Meg, I found what you were looking for.
Thank you, Robin.
Okay, I mean, I want to get through this. So three forty-two sixteen, um, sixteen two B buffer. It says, "An all multi-family and non-residentially developed properties, a landscaped buffer area shall be required to screen and protect neighboring residential properties from the view of uses and parking areas on the site. A, it shall be at least ten feet in depth along any lot line abutting or directly across the street from a lot in a residential district." So my question for you is, is the lot behind you in a residential district?
Good question. Ralph, do we have the zoning map?
If it's, if it's not in a residential district, then is it?
It says RM one district you have on your, on your site plan. That would be residential. It's a multi.
Says that, I don't see, but okay, in that case, you need a, an ever, it's got, it's got to be evergreen. Um, or whatever the planning board says, but, um, a wall or fence may be substituted.
And we have.
Oh, I don't think we mentioned, yeah, Ralph, we've got a.
The point is you need ten feet and you've only got seven.
You need a variance for the seven feet along.
You need a variance for that.
Well, we have placed a sticks for the high stockade fence along the property line for the screening to meet the, uh, screening parameter.
The screening sounds good, but the code does ask for ten feet and you've.
It's a little unclear where the fence is, because it says a wall or fence of location, height and design uh, may be substituted for the required planting, which implies you, and I think we had this issue before, which implies that you might not need the required planting. If you have a tall fence, that, if a fence that is approved by the, um, planning board, it's not clear what it means, but if you're substituting it for the planting, then you don't need the landscape area, because you've got the fence, so it's not clear. So what are you providing there? Um, so exactly, you're providing a fence and what is that pay, but, um, what is that? So that's paving there, not hedge.
Some, uh, landscaping and a fence. That is absolutely. Elevate, it's elevated. We're actually below grade. That's elevated up.
And, and the existing condition there, what you're seeing in this hatch pattern is an exposed rock face, so it'd be difficult to plant an exposed rock face.
Um, okay, so, uh, but I, I'm not, it's not a hundred percent clear whether if you put a fence there, that substitutes completely or the, exactly what the code is not clear. As is so rare in our village code. Um, and therefore, I would suggest that.
Chair, if I may, in our application, picture number thirteen and fourteen in the application.
Can you put them up here, please? I went and looked, but I didn't recall it was in the back.
It shows it perfectly. In fact, I may.
The building to your side, you know, not on the other side from Equinox, you have, it's all rock.
Right, 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 actually, um.
Can you bring it up if you have it, since I don't have the application open?
Sure, sure, sure. Actually, that would be.
I don't know if you can see my screen, the photos, or do I have to stop sharing?
Yeah, that's perfect, perfect. No, 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 you're doing, okay, boom, okay. Uh, number seven to the left. Let's go down and see number eight. No, number nine. Oh, yeah, yep, 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 yep. I'm sorry, I, I, if I'm scaring you from looking, I'm trying to look really close here, um.
As I recall, when I looked, it just looked very messy back there, but that's all I recall. The landscaping looked old and.
So if you see, you see the buildings, okay, so that would be the south, that would be the northeast corner. You can see, uh, it's, it, it, there's rock and it goes, it elevates up. That's, if you can move that little hand to the left. There you go, right, it, it, elevate starts going up there.
Um, well, it seems to me, board members, that we either need to, that.
There you go, there you go, perfect.
Since the code isn't clear as to exactly what that means, whether the fence substitutes completely for the ten feet of landscaping or, um, that we probably should, and allows the planning board to make the, since they can decide the location of the fence, and if it's substituting, then in theory, they could put it under the code. It looks like if the planning board approved a fence or wall at the rear end of the property, that would be enough. So I think if we have concerns about this, that we need to put them into, and what we want the planning board to have as part of our resolution.
We're looking forward to tidying up that back area. Certainly a nice clean fence, I think, would really enhance the, uh, the, from the current condition. So I think that, that, that's how we ask you to inter, to interpret that.
Yeah. I, yes, as, as someone who has walked by there many times, I think. Yes. I agree.
Thanks, Ralph. Right, so I'm, I'm looking here, and, and Chair and members of the zoning board, I'm looking at two A, which we're, we're talking about what about the planting of trees, shrubbery as approved by planning board. So minimize erosion, stormwater, and in that particular situation, because of the bet, because of the stone and rock. I mean, that would be an interesting question, because there's nothing really, you, you could incorporate there that would be sustainable, but.
Well, you see, I'm not talking about the part that, I'm talking, see where it says six foot stockade fence?
Chair, just want to make sure I'm looking, I'm looking at three forty-two sixteen to B.
Well, look, on the, on your drawing, there's a location that says six foot.
Oh, yes, okay, got it, got it, yeah.
That is where the residential building is, I believe, not.
It, it starts right there and then it wraps, then it wraps around.
It's the lot, that's the whole lot, is, it's not.
And so that would be the issue, and I don't believe that was where the stone face thing is. As I recall, I could see when I was there, as I believe even your, your photo shows, it's just overgrown. So, um, the question is, the code seems to say that you can have a fence, so, um, instead.
Instead of ten feet? I'm sorry, can you give me the code number again that you're reading from?
It's three forty-two sixteen. I know what you're saying, it seems weird, but since the planning board can decide a wall or fence of location, height and design approved by the planning board may be substituted for the required planting. And it's the planting that's supposed to be ten feet. Not the, not that it's supposed to be ten feet distance, but there's supposed to be a landscape buffer area. So if the wall or fence is substituted for the required planting, that would imply you don't need any required planting. And since the planning board can, um, can approve the location of the fence, again, that assumes that you don't, it doesn't need to be ten feet, because they can modify. So my thought comment would be, we have a couple of choices. We can put into the special permit what we've done, or if you think we need to have this as a variance, then, um, then they have to just amend their application to add that as a variance, I think. You know, but, but it wasn't, so anyway, that's where we are.
I'm got crazy. That wasn't the code. I just didn't. I didn't show a good job of writing down the code number. Okay, um, I have other questions now to go beyond the. I don't want to keep hogging maybe some other people.
But this is a very important point, Chair and Ms. Yergin, and I just want to make sure, so what, so I can sort of direct traffic here, like air traffic control. We're gonna go, uh, what we're saying is that either we can amend the application to include the variance for the rear, uh, because it butts the, um, residential, which we saw here, that's, that's our, I have to look and see what that is. On, at RM one, or we go to planning, which means twice a month. And we could, uh, address that issue with the fence, but in any event, we would probably need the variance, so.
It's not clear. So I think, yeah, the question board members is, uh, uh, do we want to let them, um,
No, I, I don't think we decide that. I have a lot more information and things. I don't know that we.
I just wanted to point out too, that again, the proposed curb line is on the edge of the existing pavement. So we're no closer to the property line than currently exists.
Understood.
Also, you, you're neat, you require a site plan approval, no matter what, whether this situation was there or not, because it's a change in use.
So I, I believe, when at that, for, for purposes of planning, wouldn't that be only if it's?
It's a change.
I have to check that, I, I've checked that.
Definitely a change in use, and it's definitely a more intensive change in, change in use. So I would only agree to a resolution that required that you get a site plan approval, so. But, that's where I'm at.
Well, don't they need site plan approval?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so they need site plan approval anyway, so it's, it's done.
And a lot of these things, we could, we could bring up our concerns about, you can't approach the garbage and hike the spaces on. Also, you use ADA, uh, dimensions for the ADA space. You didn't use, um, the nineteen feet that is required by the village. Correct? You use the eighteen feet length, that's an ADA dimension, is that?
That is, uh, no, it's, it's twenty feet on the angle, the parking space, which makes it, it is more than nineteen feet, because the measuring is taken in this.
Okay, the one over by the car, is that say seventeen feet?
That's the perpendicular distance, not the length along.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. I understand. Okay, I could move on to my other questions that have to do with the.
Please go.
Does anybody else want to?
I don't think anyone else had questions so far. If they come up, they'll ask them.
I'd like to know how many outdoor seats you plan for your patio area.
Outdoor seats, we planned for fifteen.
Fifteen. Because I, I would calculate how many spaces are for that and add that to your minimum parking.
So my question about that, so we have fifteen seasonal seats for, you know, seasonal dining. I'm going to defer to council for ZVA with regards to that. Uh, in the past, that's never been an issue. Has not been attributed to the total number.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So with that being said, I know.
I don't know why you're going to council. We talked about this for the Maple and Rose.
Right, but Maple Rose was in a different district. That was a TOD overlay. They didn't have sufficient parking on site. So there were numerous differences between Maple Rose, that was a, that was multi, it was multiple use, but with commercial and residential and a TOD overlay. They didn't have enough, uh, parking on site and required a variance for that. In this situation, we have ample parking on site, so I would definitely defer to council on that, whether or not, that we're, you know, that would be a precedent that would be established.
The board will make that decision if it wants to get council involved.
Um, the answer to the question is, let's just assume you have fifteen outdoor spaces. That's one space per three, one parking space.
Still having a parking, but.
So you have enough parking, because you.
Five, you have five and you also have fifty percent of your business is takeout. And you're saying some of that is to go inside, so it's a minimum parking requirement and we can decide if you need any more for the intensity of use.
But they, but my point is, they're providing more, at the moment, they are assuming we count the fifty percent, assuming we count the normal standards of the outdoor seat. That means they need five parking spaces, which is five. And then they have the ones they provide, means they meet the minimum standards.
They need the minimum standards, and they've also told us that fifty percent of their business will be takeaway, and some of that will be for people to come inside the building. So we have to consider whether or not we need to. come inside the building, so we have to consider whether or not we need to allot any more spaces. That's just for us to decide, it's not, just, I'm, I'm bringing it up as a point of discussion, not saying where I'm headed with that, but how I'm considering it.
Um, Meg, why do you think that it would need more parking spaces, given that they've accounted for the outdoor seat? And they've accounted for all the seats in the restaurant?
Because it's always a minimal requirement, we.
I understand, I asked you why you think.
Robin, because they also have a large takeout component, and whether or not this parking lot, if it's fully utilized for the people sitting there to have their food, is it also going to be sufficient for the takeout aspect of the operation?
Okay.
Which is fifty percent of their business.
Got it.
If we may respond quickly to that to add to the discussion, I would, I would argue that a takeout spot would be far less used in terms of a time period than a sit down guest. So you would be able to utilize a single stall for a takeout guest many more times than someone who's sitting inside.
Absolutely.
Plus, with the option of car service, we believe that would lighten the load for the need for parking spaces in the main lot.
Also, I wanted to, I want to point out the fact that it's very walkable, it's accessible to the residents in Oriente and other parts of Mamaroneck, the school, the gym, there are many situations where you're not going to have, if I'm at Equinox, I'm not going to drive around, I'm just going to walk next door and 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 come right back to my vehicle. So I think that there's a lot of sharing components of this as as well, so there are many factors, it's not like, we're not talking and referring to it as an island in itself, you have, it's very walkable, it's accessible. I, and especially to other uses in the immediate area.
Yeah, I, 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 I just want to, I agree with with Andy here, I, I walk down this street like every day, and those parking lots are all empty. So it's really more of a walkability, like it's just people walk.
Meg, do you want to go on with your questions?
Okay, um, you described your business model that you would give your customers that are going to take advantage of your car service area a time for a pickup. Um, I think in the application I read, like, somebody will have one PM or something. Um, could you give us a little more detail, when, if I placed an order and I paid for it, tell me when I can pick it up? Is it one minute on the dot that you're going to tell me, or is it a fifteen minute window, or is it, it's ready now, you come anytime you like? What exactly is the window that you're giving a customer when they've, they're waiting to pick up their order, the car service aspect?
Uh, so we typically give a window, so a fifteen or twenty minute window. This is a live reactive system that we've built and developed internally based on the volume of business we see. So if you, if it's twelve thirty and you go to place an order, if we have a number of orders already committed for the one o'clock or the one fifteen slot, the earliest it might say is you can pick up at one thirty or one forty-five. So this is the demand, it responds.
So, so in that model, you must know how many orders you're planning, you're allotting for fifteen minutes or a half an hour, then it sounds like you've done some algorithm and you know how many orders in general you can handle within a certain time.
I don't know those numbers offhand, but it responds to how quickly we can finish an order at a time, so we track the start and finish of a time, timing order, and when that increases, we take less orders. And then.
Get it, okay.
To your second question, so we give you the window, and then our system internally, once we say your order is ready, then the text message is fired off to your cell phone, and it says, Meg, your order is ready, please swing by, and it'll either tell you to park in a space, or in this instance, it'll say, please pull into the car service space, and we'll bring you your order.
So it could tell me to park in a space? I thought it was just going to tell me when it's ready and I go to the car.
We can customize this, we actually do that for different types of locations across the East Coast, some locations say, pull into the space that's designated in this area, others say, pull up to the curb where that's allowed in different parts of the country, so we customize it per location, so it's as specific as possible.
Okay, so you're going to use some of these spaces, then you think some of the parking stripe spaces?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to to allude to that, we will only be providing car service to the car service area that we've designated on the site plan. So that's what we allude to in the message.
Because I do remember that you did allude to your traffic study that was produced in November, you did mention that in this application, which does seem to anticipate eight to nine cars lining up in the car service area. So I'm cognizant of that and the amount of cars that that car, that traffic study has anticipated.
I think though, if you look at that, that's within a time period, so you know, our transaction, our rate of transaction is less than thirty seconds. So if you have eight to nine cars within a fifteen minute window, there will never be a time where there's a queue of cars, there's one car that pulls in, gets their order and moves on, a couple minutes later, the next customer drives in, we give them their order because they're always ready, and they go on with their day.
I see, but you're giving some number of cars the same window of like, hey, fifteen minutes, you can come by and pick it up. Everybody could show up at the same time, and you did have a traffic study that was trying to tell us there's enough room for eight to nine cars to queue up. So that says, it seems like you are getting ready for perhaps eight to nine cars in a line, getting ready to pick up the order.
Right, and we will be, and make no exception, we will be hyper focused on this business, and we are committed to the success of this site. If we see that there ever is a time when we need to react and change the demand, we will do that real time. And we will be on this, and we will be on the ground, making sure that there is no impact, negative impact to this, the the car service and the way we operate. We, we wouldn't do that to our customers, we wouldn't do that ourselves, and we certainly wouldn't do that to the community.
And this is Brian Dempsey, I, I did the traffic study. Eight to nine cars, we weren't, not expecting that, but AKRA asked us to show how many cars we, we could stack there if if necessary, and so that's why I was shown, it was a, we'll just consult it.
And when somebody drives up, you know, they, they ordered, they, they did your, they went online, they ordered, they paid, they got the message, and they come to the window and they say, oh, my kid forgot to order a soda or dessert or something. What do you tell the person sitting there at the window ready to pick up their order? Do you let them order something else, or do you tell them, sorry, you gotta, you gotta move on?
Unfortunately, it's going to be the latter. We have no facility to transact anything at that point. We don't have a cash register, we don't have a point of sale, we're simply handing out an order for car service.
So you know what, just, I know, I'm sorry, I got to jump in there because that happened to me recently, and at one of your other locations, my son wanted a salad after I ordered it. They said I have to go back and reboot it, exactly what Meg just said, exactly. And I had to go back on the online to it, and I can't, I mean, listen, took a couple minutes, but, but yeah, it gave me the next.
So would you let somebody sitting in the car do that, they go online and they purchase it and buy it while they're waiting at the window?
No, I wasn't allowed to, I had to leave. Absolutely, you cannot, I had to, we, that was especially with, for COVID purposes as well, no, I had to go, I had to leave, and and I did it because, I mean, I wanted it, and that was my.
So in this instance, that person would have to go in, go out onto the Boston Post Road and try to get back into the parking lot. In that situation, if that was you at this space, there's no place to go, there's, you would have to go out to the Boston Post Road, make a left hand turn and come back in around and try to find a place. And then wait maybe because it, they didn't do it instantly, they, it was a busy time, and they already had five people in front of you.
There is, the alternative would be to actually park and actually go in and order, make, but the way it was in the past. This, again, this is a convenience, so you would be able to park on property, and then one of the twenty-two spots, go in, order it traditionally. Unless, listen, unless it is I want to do, sit down and use the QR and sit down and actually have a meal in the restaurant, so you have two options. Actually, there, if you look at the, the, the overlay or the, the narrative that was provided by CHOP, there are four, there still remains four different options here. Dining in as a restaurant, taking out, or on the, the car service, or again, it would still be the Uber and and the other type of application.
Okay, I was surprised to find that you didn't change your, your operating model, that you're planning on using the window to to, for people to drive up to a window, and someone's going to be standing inside and handing the order to the customer in their car outside. And to me, that's outdoor counter service, so I don't think that's a prohibited use. So outdoor counter service is a counter, is some sort of structure, some sort of surface where there's an employee on one side, customer on the other side, and they're getting some aspect of the business and get, getting their order fulfilled is a part of that service, and when the person's outside, I consider that outdoor counter service, so I don't find that the window is permitted. I also have trouble with thinking that the space in front of the window is actually a parking spot, a car is parked. I understand, I looked at the code, it said that you need to design, you need to give space a parking, a car service area, talks about it.
Doesn't need a parking.
Talks about an area, doesn't talk about how many spaces, it does say, as I understand it, that we need to make sure it's sufficient, but it doesn't talk about, like, it needs exactly two spaces or three spaces or parallel spaces. But it does say that the car is parked there, and I don't know if I consider it parked. If you're queuing up and you're, you're not allowed to get out of your car, you couldn't ever, you would tell the person to move on, they can't get out to take their kid to the bathroom, or as, you know, if you forgot something, you can't go in and order it there. It doesn't seem like a parking space, it is a, a, a line that you drove up to, and you are not allowed to park there, you need to move on. I know that you're calling it semantically, it's a car service area, but I don't consider that a parking space because I don't think that the car is parked. I also think that it is, whether it's eight to nine, or it's two cars, or three cars, it's a line queuing up. It's not cars that were parked stationary, they're in a line running, and like you say, fifteen seconds, it's not parking, they're running up. To me, that's drive up service, you can call it drive up car service or just drive up service. I also find that that's prohibited in the code, so I don't find that this business model is, is a permitted use in, in the by our code, so I'm surprised that you went back to using the window and didn't find.
Ms. Jürgen, the car service as defined by our code added February twenty fifth, two thousand and eight, effective March fourth, two thousand and eight, simply states car service from a restaurant provided customers remaining in their vehicles parked in a designated parking area of the restaurant parking lot.
Yeah, and as I said, it's a designated area, I don't feel that they're parked, that's my interpretation, they're not parked. And also, they are receiving it through an outdoor counter service, which is also not prohibited, so both aspects of that I don't think are.
I think, and we would strongly disagree in this sense that this is not an outdoor counter, and secondly, uh, the New York law, as it defines parking versus standing versus, I mean, DMV regs in terms of what what's defined as parking of vehicle can still remain idle, engine running, and it's still parked.
Yeah, I tried looking at some definitions, since it's going to be there for some certain amount of time. Um, I don't think your fifteen second model of queuing cars.
Thing, but I think the good thing is, and I, I tried stressing this during the first round. The good thing about a special use permit is that there are governors on this, and if indeed it doesn't work, we have to come back to you for renewal. Nothing says that something has to be three years, Ms. Jürgen, in terms of, you know, annual or or two years. I, and I would agree, and I believe my clients would agree with me that if given that opportunity to establish this, that it works, it will, if it doesn't, then we're going to have to come back and explain to you and to the chair and other five members of the zoning board that it doesn't, or you know, how it, how we can make it better, but the point is, there are governors in place here, so it's not a free for all, this is something that, again, my client, this was not an academic exercise, they're committed to the village, they're committed to making this work. If it doesn't work, it's going to make a horrible experience for their patron, patrons, it's not going to create good faith amongst the neighbors. And I, I think all of your concerns, not just yours, Ms. Jürgen, but the chairs and everybody on, are genuine, and and that's why we're taking and factoring this in, so I think if given that chance, especially with the governors that are in place with a special use permit, you'll, I think you'll be pleasantly pleased, and if not, then we come back.
I appreciate that, and I actually am convinced that you guys are sincere and that you need to make this work and not have a detrimental impact on the, that's not what I'm talking about. We don't have jurisdiction to allow uses that are not permitted. So this would be something that you could go to the trustees and say, hey, there's a new model in town, and think about revising the code, but it's not something that we can do, so you're, I appreciate that you're, you are well intentioned and that you'll do everything you can to make sure it, it works. But if it's an unpermitted use, that it's not for us to sell it, well, it works, but we can't give authorization for an unpermitted use.
On the other hand, not everybody on the board may agree it's an unpermitted.
Absolutely, absolutely, I was just, I just wanted a chance so that when we go into deliberations and that, and and Mr. Spats just was able to respond, that I'm, I'm sharing where I'm at. I also have a problem, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, that, that I realized that by offering the, the service to the tables, it's a restaurant. And originally, it was going to be forty sixty, it was going to be sixty percent through the takeout and forty percent inside, I remember. Um, I think Nick, you, that's what you mentioned. Um, I understand that perhaps you're having a new model, and you're going to promote the indoor dining, so maybe fifty fifty is what you have in your application now. But I still have a problem with it, it's, when it's fifty fifty, is that the, what's the primary type of food establishment? You know, because we don't want to have a food establishment that's thirty percent serving, and so then you can have car service. When you get to fifty, is that enough to say, oh, this is a restaurant that has some other sort of accessory uses of take a and car service that's building up fifty percent of its business? Um, I have to give that some consideration. Um, in the past, when we've had some food establishments that don't fit neatly into a definition in the code, we have relied on the fact that there is food establishment, and so we've uh, some food establishments that have a lot of takeaway, we didn't call them a sit down restaurant, but we have approved them. Um, but not with car service, and not with a outdoor counter service, so.
Meg, two, two thoughts, if I could. Uh, the first is, just to address your question, is why we included the window in the, in the reapplication. Um, uh, the answer to that is certainly not to offend or to ignore anything that was discussed. Um, but in, in, in hopefully in good faith, along with the other elements of our application, it has been our understanding from the beginning legally that the, 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 the top of the pyramid here is what does the code say? Right, because as you point out, it's not your job to, it's not our job to ask you to change the code, and it's not your job to change the code, so it's our understanding that the, the, these decisions are governed by what the code says. And we, as you know, as Justin referred to, we, we, we made our best effort, and I think with, with intellectual honesty, can say that in the last call, when I spoke for a, a very, very long time, that we felt that we had walked through the bullet points of what the code says to a point of satisfaction on the, on the window, right, it is, it is certainly up to, you, you, you can disagree with that, but so it is, is for that reason that we kept it in. I also did indicate to you, because I'm a reasonable person, look, we can, you know, we, we think it is appropriate to the code, we think it is, we, we actually think it conforms to the code, and we think it actually makes it better for customers in the town if we can use the window. But if, if, if you, if the board does not agree, we, you know, we'll figure out how to run what we can run without.
But you didn't make an application for an area variance for that, or urge that our area variance would be permissible, correct?
So what are you asking for the, for the, for the parking window they have, it's a drive up, so it's car service, they, they asked for car service, and that's what they're asking for.
That's what we're, we're asking for car service, we're asking.
But I'm talking about the, the, the windows.
It was, I, I, I don't think I, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I'm happy to go back to it. The case that we believe we presented was that, that we did not need a special variance for that, that it was not, that we, the case that we presented was that it did not meet the definition of, of counter service or outdoor or window service, right, so and and I, by the way, I'll go through back through the whole entire thing if you would like me to, but I don't, I don't know that that's going to be a good.
You didn't, you didn't apply for the area variance for.
Did not apply for the variance because we did not think it was, we did not think it was required, period. Okay.
I have a question about the traffic study. The study indicated that there were, that you used eleven CHOP restaurants in, I think, Westchester to come up with your determination. Of those eleven restaurants that were reviewed, were any of those restaurants, A, had a window pickup feature?
No. No, they, they did not, um, they were the ones, and we, as we say, the traffic said, very, very. very, very extra conservative in the trip generation numbers there, based upon our discussions with AKRF when we were putting the traffic study together. Um, they were the peak times, at the peak fifteen minutes of those places. And we combined them together to be very conservative, so we're and also those numbers were transactions, so four people came in the same car. You know, cuz like one of these spots is the place in, in Ry Brook, in the Ry, Ry Ridge Shopping Center, I don't know if you've been to that one.
Yeah, I actually was there a couple months ago.
And so those, and the one at the, in Scarsdale, also, they're surrounded by large office parks. Um, and they're in shopping centers, so people are coming to them and say, if they're coming from an office, like when we go from work, um, four people would be in the car. And those numbers are actually transactions, so the four people in the car, four different orders, that was, we counted that as four vehicles instead of, um, just four people. So they were very conservative in our numbers, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was there, um, a couple months ago, and I had three orders, and, you know, but they were all in one vehicle, so I mean, it, um, but it was all part of the same, the same cost, so I don't know how, how you determine that, um, there were three different orders, but they were paid for with one transaction.
No, but, but those, what those numbers were, were paid in separate transactions, so.
Okay.
Plus, we didn't count for anybody walking.
So my question is, generally speaking, if you have a pickup window, can one, is, is, is it a correct assumption that that generates more activity, there's more activity with, um, these pickup windows than not?
I think we're shifting, go ahead, Nick, if you wanna take that.
Um, yeah, yeah, it, it, it is a, we, we believe that, um, any additional convenience that we can provide to our customer is beneficial to our customer.
Well, no, I'm not talking about convenience, I'm talking about, does it generate higher traffic by having a pickup window, that's my question.
Um, we, we do not currently operate a, pick, a, a, a window, uh, you know, cars, in this case, car service. We do not currently operate a pickup, a pickup window.
We've got a great.
It's not, I mean, again, my question is, when a business has a pickup window service, does that tend to increase traffic?
Greta, I think what we're doing is, we've got a great digital platform to offer our guests to order online and then pick up in store. We will, we will be shifting a portion of those sales where people would normally park, walk inside, get their order to pick up via car service. Anyone that goes to chopped, uh, anyone who doesn't go to chopped today would stop and say, they've got a pickup window in Amerenek, and would decide to patronize us more often than, than they do today. I, I think because of the way, this isn't a drive-thru, like you can't be driving on West Boston Post Road and, I want chopped and pull into the parking lot. That's not how this operates, you have to have pre-planned, pre-ordered, prepaid, and then pull in, so I don't know. I don't believe that we're gonna be generating significantly more traffic because it is a convenient way to pick up, we'll be shifting from people that used to park and walk in, to pulling into the car service space, collecting and leaving.
I, um, I think you said previously, maybe I'm, um, I misunderstood that, do you have some locations on the East Coast that have this, this pickup service, is that right? You do have some locations?
We do not operate any pickup windows today.
Okay, so this would be the first of the kind?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, we have a variety of locations where we can use all the technology that Justin has described. And then you can come, depending on the jurisdiction and the landlord, you can either pull up to the curb in front of the restaurant to designated parking spaces where it says you can only park here for five minutes for pickup, and we'll run it out to your car or to specific areas of the parking lot, so we have, we have, we have versions of these things, right? Where the technology enables a, a relatively frictionless pickup experience.
And I guess my other question, and this, you know, it's been touched upon and was noted in the traffic study that, you know, you're contemplating that, you know, you said in the traffic study that typically sixty-five of chop business is from pickup. But you're contemplating and projecting that fifty percent will be, um, from pickup. What's the basis of you, of your, um, projection that that it's gonna be fifty percent as to, as opposed to the norm of sixty-five percent?
I think to clarify that sixty-five percent is digital orders, which we need to clarify, you can order digitally and pick up, walk in store. Uh, so that's, that's where that order comes from, I think.
I see, I thought it said thirty-five percent from digital, sixty-five percent from pickup. That's what I thought I read.
Sorry, I, 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 I can reference the, the paragraph you've got in front of you, but the large percent of our business is, is digital order. So folks that use their cell phone to place their orders and, and either dine in or pick up. And so now, can you rephrase your question based on that?
Okay, well, I guess my question is, why do you think this is, this location is not going to generate the percentage of digital and pickup that other locations have? Why, why are you projecting that it's gonna be lower to, as fifty percent pickup? And that fifty percent will be, the other fifty percent will theoretically be sit-down.
I think.
What's the basis of that, is it's not the norm of your business model?
Sure, I, I think I'd say two things, one, the demographics of this area are different than our other locations we did the traffic study on. Other locations in Westchester have large office parks that are in and around those restaurants, and that generates a large, a high number of pickup uses. Um, this area, we feel is gonna be a great kind of suburban, family-oriented restaurant for the community, which is why we're also offering wait service at the table, so we feel there's going to be a different type of customer that patronizes Chapman Amerenek compared to our other locations in the area. So we will be promoting that we have this table service, families can come in, order at the table, and we'll bring the food to them, that will be a service people will want to get, and that will be an attraction for them to sit down rather than pick up compared to other locations.
Yes, if I can, I'm gonna chime in as a parent who has a house in Orietta, okay, two things, one, during the day, you're gonna have less traffic and motor vehicles in that property, you're gonna have more kids coming from the high school, middle school uh, that are gonna be going and dining at, at your establishment. Uh, in the evening, you have a lot of sporting events across the street that use the field at the Amerenek High School, in the immediate proximity. Uh, they're gonna walk, okay, I'm not gonna get in the car and drive across the street, I'm probably gonna walk across the street with my kids and, and actually walk in there, or I'm gonna dine in there, so I'm gonna completely agree with you as someone who actually lived and has like for the last twelve years of my patterns, uh, with kids. Um, and so I'm, I'm gonna reiterate and agree with that, that that's, those kind of patterns are gonna fit versus your location in Ry Ridge, which I also go to, and it's absolutely more run-in, run-out because of the nature of businesses that are local, and the businesses, that there's very few residential and sports fields uh, that are located in that area. So I, I, I would happen to agree.
So I, I, I guess you're saying that you don't have any chopped restaurants in Westchester that have this fifty percent demographic, um, model. You know, what, um, do you have, how many restaurants do you have on, do you have that, do you have restaurants that do meet this model, is this gonna be a totally new model also? Or you know, I, I, I'm, I guess I'm unclear, do you have restaurants that are, that are out, that model as you're describing it, or is this gonna be something you're contemplating and it's new?
It's a good question, th- this is, uh, I would say a mix of both, so we've got some markets in, in our estate that are more suburban, I would say this would align with those numbers. Uh, but two, we are doing something different here, we're committing to doing something different, we've got a new service model, we've got a standalone restaurant uh, on its own parcel, these are new things for us, and we've put the best minds in the business behind this, and this is what, this is our projections, what we think. And that is based on the type of operation we're gonna perform.
As I call, this is the only restaurant you have that has the seating and the order from tables with table service?
Correct.
Therefore, there's a different operation, if no other restaurant has table service, then to that extent, it is a new operation for all, I mean, and to some degree, you don't know, you could end up with eighty-five percent people eat in, everybody might decide to come here and eat in all the time, or you could, or it could be a disaster, right, you just don't know. Honestly, being right, you just don't know which it's gonna be.
We're hoping for not disaster.
I understand the point is from our perspective, you don't really know, you, you're making, ba- ba- based on your experience in the business, you're making reasonable estimates.
There's a couple things that we can, absolutely correct, Robin, absolutely correct. We have, we have, we have eighty restaurants, right, I can tell you that if, if there were office towers, and if this were a restaurant where we had sixty thousand daytime pop of op- of office within three, three, within, within three miles, we would anticipate a much higher pickup. This conforms much more to a neighborhood community site for us, similar to our location in Scarsdale. Okay, which is gonna have a much lower percentage of pickup, because the demographic of the customer there is not gonna be somebody coming out of an office for lunch. The customer is gonna be somebody coming throughout the course of the day, a mom, a dad, kids using the restaurant, sports classes, things like that. So there, there's two answers to the question, one is, you were correct, we've, we, we, we've presented averages for eighty restaurants. And so in those averages, there are obviously a range of restaurants that are below the average and above the average. And the characteristics of this restaurant match the ones that are below the average. Right? There's no daytime office pop around the site, it's, it's very, 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 very little compared to anything else that we've done. So on top of that, we are going to now encourage people, we're, we're elevating, we're elevating what the, what the seating in the restaurant experience is gonna be like, so between those two things, it's safe for us to assume that it should be below average, what the number will be and how exactly that will play out, Robin's correct. It's, it's, you know, it's, it is, it's entertaining every time to see how you do versus your projections.
I, I have a question, going back from when you first presented us, this to us. And, and, um, it was new for us to look at the window, our service model. And I, I think there were a lot of reservations, like, wait a minute, I don't think so, and we asked you, like, would you just consider making this a restaurant, and I thought that you had said, if you could not get the car service, this, this drive, however you wanna describe, the driving over and picking up the order through the window, you were not interested in opening. Um, could you speak to that, cuz it does sound like you expect to generate a lot more sales by having this uh, this mo- model of going through the window, because you, you have a lot of successful businesses where you offer, you can sit down and eat after, whether you went in or you had your digital, or people park, and a lot of people, Greta just did it, and in Ry Brook, that people park. But you didn't think somehow that it would be sufficient without the window in this particular space? So that says to me that it sounds like you're expecting, um, generate additional sales in, in a normal model by bringing this pickup service at the window.
Jürgen, are you referring to the original application and the, the presentation provided by Nick, I just wanna make sure we have the context of your.
Yeah, it was during that first conversation, not the conversation tonight.
I mean, the, the answer is, and some, and, and remind me, when was the first time that we appeared before the, before the?
January, I believe, twenty twenty-one.
In Ja- in, in January?
January, there was probably three or four, three or four appearances.
Yeah, and we started planning the site, we started doing the drawings and working on all of our assumptions, I'm asking my team sometime, like during the summer last year.
Over the summer, for sure.
You know, I, I, I think, Meg, look, the, 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 the best answer to that question is, the world's moving pretty quickly right now. Right? In terms of people's expectations for how they interact in restaurants and how they use digital tools. You know, last year at this time, we were, we, we were at a much, we, we, we were at lower digital usage in the suburbs. Right? It is something, it's something that had started in, in, in urban areas, right, where people are very repetitive in an office buildings, they were using apps and, right? And then, and then all of a sudden, we went through a period of COVID where, you know, du- due to, due to health and safety laws, it was a hundred percent digital. Right? So, you know, as we look at this location, um, it, it is, it's, it is absolutely the case that we believe that when you, when you have the opportunity to conform to where people are going now, that's a big chunk of business. I, to answer your question, this is a riskier decision for me, I'm, I, I'm, I'm in deep, this is a, a risky decision for me. I mean, without the car, without being able to actually walk out of, you know, this is a risky decision for me without being able to perform this, this service. It is, is, it's, it's worse, so however you wanna interpret that, would we, you know, is it generating business? Or is, are we losing business if we don't have it? Yeah, we think the business is better if we can provide this service to our customers, absolutely. Um, you know, and, and, and do I think that the impact of that next year is gonna be even more so than today? Next year, it might be the year you go out of business if you, if you, if you don't have it. Right? Cuz, cuz there's, there's zero chance that anybody here is using their, there is, 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 is using less digital next year than they are this year. That's not, that's, we're, we're not, we're trying to play, I mean, we, we, we created the chopped salad for lunch twenty years ago. That was back twenty years ago, when people said, whoever, salad is your main course, right? So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to look towards the fut- towards, towards the future.
It's, it's, it's pretty cool, I have confidence in you, it sounds like a great model, just whether or not that works here in our.
Like, the, the only other thing I would say to that is, you know, look, we, we've tried to, to, we have, we have, a- again, with intellectual honesty have tried to follow the rules, and the rules is presented to us where we have to adhere to what the code states. And so my only, my only question, or my only request of you is that i- if you tell me, Nick, the code states, right, there's something here in the code that states that what you are, you've told us you're gonna do in terms of a parking area does not conform to the words in the code, then give me a chance to go back and figure out how to conform to the words in the code. But when your answer is, Nick, I, you know, I, I see that it says you have to have a parking area, and you said you're gonna have a parking area. But I, I, it doesn't feel like a parking.
No, specifically, I said it's a parking area where the car is parked, and I kind of, it's not kind of for me, specifically, I don't feel like driving, waiting in a line and driving up and taking fifteen seconds to get us, to get something handed to you is actually parking your car, so that's not a kind of.
I know, I'm not saying that's kind of, but respectfully, the code says we have to provide a parking area, it does not say what you just said.
It says you have to, where a car is parked, it does add that into the description, a parking area where someone is parked. So that is what I was bringing up. So.
If there, if there's, if there's any opportunity for us, and I think we've demonstrated this since the beginning, if there's any opportunity for us to to evolve, change, right, or respond to the, to the words as written in the code, we will, we will do it.
And, and can I ask you, when you feel that this, what you're providing there through the window is not outdoor counter service? And I, I don't think we need to go through it, you did a very, very good job of explaining, you don't have the menu board, you're not placing your order there, and you're not paying for it there, and the only part is at the end, you're getting your food. But would you consider it outdoor counter service if it had no menu board, you already ordered, but you had to pay for it and then get the food? Where is it that you think that it, you don't consider it outdoor counter service because one piece of this is not, doesn't count? Which, how many pieces did you think it would count to make it an outdoor counter service?
I, I mean, I, I, I think that if, 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 if I had, if, if I were performing four out of five of the functions of outdoor counter service, I think you'd say, oh, hey, well, you don't, you know, you don't have, you don't have napkins and straws, but you're still ordering, paying, and receiving your food, that does, that's whatever, that's outdoor counter service. I think when you, if you think about the function, the, the fundamental component of a business transaction, which would be ordering and paying, right, like, the, the, like, you're not, like, you're not doing those two, I, 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 I would certainly.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, are you asking my opinion, or are you asking my?
No, no, I'm just, I, cuz you had to have this argument that this, over there, that's an outdoor counter because there's a menu board, and you place your order, and you pay, it seemed that you were, you were agreeing that, that might be an outdoor counter service if you did all those things, and I don't know where you're coming up with the, the main component of a business transaction since it's not there, that somehow this doesn't make it outdoor counter service.
Well, again, I mean, if we wanna.
Still, commercial service.
Said, what I said was, it isn't defined in the code, right, we all agreed to that, it wasn't defined in the code. So that therefore, we had to. So that therefore we had to go and look at examples of people who were deemed to be outdoor counter service and see what they were doing. And we did that. And then we looked at all of the things that we were doing, we compared what we were doing to what they were doing. And we said, there's only one piece, so therefore, we don't know, we, we, it would be our, it would be our uh, application that doing one thing out of outdoor counter service doesn't make you.
Okay, and I disagree. I think if you're doing any aspect of servicing your customer, you are supplying outdoor counter service.
Um.
We just.
When we state much, they're very true.
Yeah. So.
So, so, so you, you think that outdoor counter service is just defined of the use of a window?
Get outdoor counter services, there's some sort of surface, something set up with a, with a, an employee on one side, a customer on the other, and some aspect of the commercial aspect of this operation is being transacted over that surface.
Isn't that a matter of interpretation? And if it's a matter of interpretation, and if there's a disparity or vague, there's vague uh, in this, in this situ- it would, it would actually go to the benefit of the applicant. I mean, that.
No, I, to me, there's no vagueness and there's no ambiguity. It is one piece. Nobody would argue that.
Code doesn't, our code doesn't.
Receiving their order. I think we're going to go around in circles. I made my, you let me see where I'm at, and you're, I think we're going to convince them.
And it's been five months now, so I just wonder if we could, you know, crystallize the legal issues in front of us at this point and kind of move forward on.
I think we do that in our deliberations.
And again, I, I, I offered this up to you last time because I respect your opinion on this. And at the end of the day, I, I do think there, it's interpretation. I'm not the expert on what, on, on what, who interpretation falls to. But to, to, to your other question, can I run this business? If, if the answer to, I don't believe there is anything in the code that says that, that my, my request to use the window for my car service has anything to do with my re- request for special application just to perform car service. So the answer to the question is, okay, you know, we, we can't, we can't see our way to use the window, then fine, I shut the window, then we will go out the door and we will perform a car service the way everybody else performs their car service.
All right, is there, if there's nothing, does anybody on the board have anything different to ask?
That was.
Sorry, I think we've, we've gotten to the bottom of what you think and what make things and what other board members might think on this issue. So if any of the buddy has a, have a different focus on this.
A different question. Um. Let's say, you know, let's say you have, um, you have one designated car service spot. Let's say you have three or four people waiting to pick up. Would you, would you not serve them in the, you know, would you have to wait? Is your model saying, I'm only going to deliver car service to the customer at that designated spot? And you'd, if there are three or four other people in the parking lot, you're not going to deliver to them because they're not in the designated spot?
Take two minutes.
I think red discussions, if, if, if we have a designated parking area, which I think did, right, and, and, and somebody.
Right now you have a one designated spot, but let's say, let's say.
Right, and that's, but that's the designated parking area, right? Um, um. I, i- is your, is, is your question, what, what will we do if someone else parks somewhere else? Will we bring in?
Yep.
Um, well, i- i- if, if the answer, if the rule is, if, if, if the code is that we can only deliver the food to a car in the designated spot, we have the ca- we have the capacity to tell people that they have to be in that designated spot, and we'll deliver the food to that designated spot. Justin, does that sound right?
Yeah, that's where I was going with that. They have to be in the car service area. We have asked for the single space close to the front yard as part of the special use permit, which we, where we started our conversation tonight. Um, in the event that someone's order is not yet ready when they pull up, which we think will be very rare, given the digital communication, we'll ask them to pull and wait in that spot, a car service waiting spot, we'll bring the food out to them and continue to serve guests their car service in the designated spot once the car is pulled forward.
So. Are you, um, are you contemplating that you're going to be, um, delivering one by one in some particular order that you've determined? Like, if, if somebody, if somebody's not there, let's say you, you tell customer the, you know, customer A to be there at one fifteen, customer A is late. Um, customer B, you know, customer B is there and customer C is there. Um, are you going to wait for customer A or are you going to go forward with customer B? How, how's that going to work?
So the good news about our digital platform is we know when all the orders are ready. So as soon as, uh, Greta, if you place an order, and Meg, and Robin all place an order at the same time, we will communicate with each of you when exactly the moment your salad is complete. So there, the, the times when this would happen are almost never. Uh, but the good news is that we do pickup shelves for our interior guests all the time. And you have lots of spaces where you can slot Greta's order, Meg's order, and Robin's order. And even if Robin ordered last but came first, she could grab her order and be on her way. And that next to the window is exactly how we're going to operate. So if Meg pulls up first, we'll pull her order off the shelf and hand it to her for car service. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Is there a way, Chair and members of zoning board, I, I, I don't want to cut you off, and obviously if you have more questions, we were, that's what we're here for. We're here to vet anything that you may have. So we have a consensus of what direction we're going. Is there a way we could maybe perhaps take a straw? Just an indication, a straw vote, so we can kind of get an idea of where we're going to go, because I'm looking at section three forty-two seventy-five of the code, and I see B, which states that any change of use or intensity, uh, that's referring to the planning board. Um, none of the other parameters, parking, loading, circulation, drainage, utilities, landscaping, outdoor lighting, is going to change. In fact, I, I think to some degree, w- when you compare it to a bank at three o'clock on a Friday, uh, you know, they're both intense. So that was previously a UBS, um, or HBC, it was, it was a bank before, um, with, I think, three, uh, or two lanes going through. So in terms of the intensity, you know, that, that's marginal. It is a change of use, no doubt about it. So is there a way we can perhaps get a straw vote in terms of where we're going with this, as is, as submitted?
How much are you asking? But I, but I will say you, a, a restaurant has more required parking, I believe, than a bank. And therefore, you have to go for a site plan regardless of, that's what the code.
Do that anyway, because it's a change of use. That, that, I, I mean.
So you have to go, so I'm not sure whether site plan was relevant, but you're asking, is the board likely to approve this or not? Because if we're not going to approve it, we have some issues, you want to move on.
We have to move on, we have to address, yeah, yes, Chair, we need to evaluate the situation and see where, what trajectory we're going to go. Um, so as is, setting aside the, the variants, just with the special use permit for a restaurant.
I'm opposed to that. We haven't deliberated. We need to speak to each other and not take a straw poll at this point. That's how.
Actually, I think that it's a question of if board members want, so let's take a straw poll on whether or not board members want to take a straw poll. And let's consider it that way, regardless of whether or not we've deliberated or not. If board, somebody has asked us to do something, and, um, my only comment is we can take a straw poll and the view may be, no, we don't want to take a straw poll. But, um, uh, you know, the problem that we have is that we close things and then we just, we don't deliberate while the application is open. We have.
I understand that.
Deliberating after it's closed, which isn't what all, you know, some places deliberate during it and leave it open, so that if there are questions, they can go them back. And we don't do that. So given that we close before we deliberate as a group, I would say that, um, board members, are you willing to take a straw poll? Meg is not. Abby?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Dave?
No, not at all, because I think it poses a serious legal problem as well. So then what happens is we're going to measure from what we said one moment in the straw poll to our vote, and that becomes a wonderful thing to review in a seventy-eight. I mean, I, I don't know. I just think it's, it's voting twice.
Fine, okay.
The vote has to mean something. If, unless you want a meaningless vote, in which case I don't want to participate in a meaningless vote. So if it's meaningful, then it raises a fascinating issue.
Uh, Dave, that's fine. I'm just asking a question. Um, and Greta?
Well, based on what Dave just said, I'm going to say no.
So I, I think based on what Dave said, we just said, it does raise some issue. Otherwise, I think I would have been okay. But I think it does raise an issue, because if we say yes now, just looking at it possibly, and then we get to deliberate, and in deliberations, other points get discussed among the members that lead us to a no, um, we don't want you to be able to sue us and say, you told us yes. So I think, God, based on Dave's comments, I agree with, with Greta also that no.
There is another option the board might consider. Instead of taking an, an actual straw vote, the board members could go and each kind of express uh, their opinions on the application without saying yes or no, just simply express where your thoughts are on the application.
I think a lot of us have already spoken, why are we doing that?
I agree, and that probably is the same, you know, the applicant would be able to discern from that where they need the application to go.
I think we need to close and, and deliberate, and that's what we should be doing next, and. Deliberate on what we just all heard. On what the, we have to deliberate on the requests that you have made. That's what we are going to deliberate on.
Here lies the problem, folks, okay?
So, are you gonna? I don't want to argue, really.
Not arguing, Meg. I'm, I'm simply speaking on, as an attorney for an applicant and someone who's very involved in the community here. I, with the problem is, you have an applicant who starts this process many, many months ago. You have a landlord who has a vacant building in our community with a viable, good tenant, a, a entity that's well-respected, and that would be a pretty good addition to our community. Um, and so when we talk about straw polls, opinions from, um, appointed individuals who have a job to do, okay? An obligation, a responsibility, not only to the community, but to in- individuals who are looking to do business here in the community. Um, this is, these, these are important decisions. These are tremendous investments that people are making. And this happens also to be someone who resides and lives and, and has, you know, significant ties to the community. So I don't think anything we're asking is unreasonable, or, or, or what, what we're doing, what we're trying to arrive at is, well, are we gonna, because if, if we get denied, then we can't come back for six months. I don't know if the landlord is going to be too generous to say, you know what, I don't want to wait six months and keep my property vacant. Okay, these are challenging, typical times for landlords. Dave, you can shake your head all you want, okay? That's fine. All right, but as an advocate and as someone who is on, sitting on this side, looking out and trying to look for, look to improve and enhance our community, this is an important decision. And we are, we've, we have taken your input, we've taken the, um, guidance. And again, not making this academic, but actually incorporating this into the application. You, you, you heard Nick, Justin, the entire team say, this is something that we've never done. We're doing this so that we can accommodate and, and, and get and make it right by the community. So if this is something that we're going to get denied on and not be able to come back six months, then that's problematic. So i- i- if the window is going to be a problem, then that is something that we can address. And I, as their attorney, can say, you know what, Chair, members of the zoning board, I'm going to adjourn this matter so we can review the options, so that we're not done, we're not in a situation where they are financially, uh, just getting strapped, uh, uh, in this application process. So I don't think anything we're asking for is unreasonable.
Well, it, it sounds to me that what you're asking for is that we take a straw vote that is binding, or that certainly you will.
Has it binding?
Excuse me, let me finish my answer. Or my question, which I will pose. It's not binding, but you're saying to me right now, but we will rely upon it in what we do. Now, so therefore, we should, a straw vote is what you're going to rely upon, is what you've just gotten convinced that you were saying.
Dave?
But besides that.
Dave, we're not taking a straw vote, we are ready to sign up.
I understand that, but that's what he said. But I'm also saying, I don't understand what, the six-month rule that you're referring to, right? That would apply no matter what application, if you changed it, if you didn't change it, it would apply?
Newfield, we have had experiences. I, are you gonna, I'm, I'd be more than happy to answer that.
And the citation.
And as the, as the, excuse me?
Where is it? In our code or is it a matter of the into the law?
Historically, Mr. Newfield, when applications have been denied, the applicant has not been permitted to reapply unless there are significant changes to the actual, um, application. And as the attorney for the applicant, I have to advise him of that. So if I just went ahead and said, okay, make a decision, they need to be aware that if it's not in their favor, we may not be able to come right back. And as that, as a landlord, as someone who owns property in this community, that's a scary endeavor to be, to, to have to face not having a tenant in this time, at this day and age. So what I'm asking you, and I'm not trying to be combative, and I'm not, it's certainly not, I understand the obligations and responsibilities that you all, you all, Chair and members of the zoning board have to protect the integrity in the, in the process. And I understand the fact that there's so many vague components of our code, and I respect the fact that you, Chair and members of the zoning board have actually sent memos to the board of trustees asking them to clarify these. I applaud you for that. And I think that, and I'm, I'm I think that's a paramount issue here in our community. So I'm not asking to put yourselves in a situation where you're setting yourselves up for a lawsuit. But what I am, and what I think that, what Nick and Justin have been communicating is, well, listen, if, if, if this really is going to be an issue that we're going to get shot down and it's not going to go forward, before we go to the planning board, before we start the process of doing this, then allow us that opportunity to tweak our application, our, 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 our business model. Do they want the window? Of course they want the window. Meg, you and I can discuss this until the sun comes up, and we, it's okay to disagree, it's okay. But the fact is, if everybody else feels the same way, that this is not a, a, a car service, then fine, I know what we have to do, Dave. That's all I'm saying.
I, I just want to say, I went off camera because my wifi was down. I'm sorry. I just want to say I wasn't not listening. My wifi was bad.
So my point is, Dave, is your outdoor, that's, you're talking about an outdoor counter, correct? Like, making the window, whether treating that as an outdoor counter. But, but am I correct? That's the basic thrust of it. I think that's, David.
One thing to you that I don't grasp, and I really don't.
Yeah, please.
There's no application ever made for a variance from that.
Respectfully, and I, and Mr. Newfield, I respect what you're saying. Dave, Dave, I'm not, and I, can I tell you, and that was a decision that we made because we feel that we feel, and I remember, can I tell you something? I remember listening to your deliberation, and I remember you saying, I'm not going to tell the applicant what to do. I know what I would do, but I'm not going to tell them what to do. I'm not asking you to tell us what to do. What I'm asking is, well, if you don't think that this is a car, a, a car service, then let me advise Justin and, and Nick and his team and say, folks, they're not, they don't think this is a car service. So we're gonna have, i- i- if there's a way to pivot, pivot now, so we don't have to wait until September, because remember, we come back in July, that's it, August, you're down. We gotta wait till September. I have to talk to the landlord who's on, I think he's still David, say, David, we're not going to have an application prior until September. So there are a lot of moving parts. I know you all can understand, and, 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 and you, you, you feel what, what we're going through here. So I guess the point is, if you don't feel that this is a car service, then tell us, and we will be guided accordingly. That's one spoke of an application, that's it.
I'm happy to proceed with your, with what you want, and I'll tell you that I do not think this is car service. I think that if you had the counter and what you had was a member of the staff of, um, chopped, go up to the counter, get the food, right? Uh, you order, you park in a spot, I go up to that window, let's not call it a counter. I go up to the window, I work for chopped, I get the salad that you've ordered, I bring it to your car, that is car service. But if you're parked at the window, then it's not car service.
Chair Kramer, thank you.
And that's what I think.
Thank you.
So, I think it's pretty clear to me that it isn't, and, and I, I honestly, until this was described today, it wasn't clear from the application what you were doing with the window, but now it's. what you were doing with the window, but now it's clear. You're just sticking it out. You have to order in advance, but you're surfing it out the window. I don't think that's a part.
Yeah.
So that's what I feel about. I don't know what anyone else does, but
Chair Kramer, thank you. We appreciate that. And, and Mrs. Jürgen, I, I hear you loud and clear, and I'm not being combative, I'm not being argumentative. Thank you for clarifying that. We, I have direct, I, I know, okay.
Okay, so let me ask you, or do you, um, so, so that we can move this on, or I mean, it's already 10 o'clock.
Understood.
Do you want to adjourn so you can uh consider whether to withdraw that piece? Or do you want us to vote on this? And to answer Dave in the six months, I know there's a requirement, but I think Charlie, that you mentioned last time or sometime that the six month only applied in certain situations, and since I don't know where that six month is, I can never find it. Um, but I know there is a six month requirement for denial, but, but I don't know where it is, and I can't find it right now. My, I don't know if it's in village law, or it doesn't seem to be in the code, but in any case, it doesn't matter. So um I am suggesting that if you would like to adjourn to consider to whether withdraw that piece of the application, so you would just need the variance and um not the car service part, then um I think that we have our application is July 22nd, the next date.
Uh, Andrew, I don't want to interrupt, but I think I'm going to ask the same question. You are probably. Totally appreciate that, Robin. Point of clarification. We would like to adjourn, I, I think, in order to remove the use of the window as part of car service, but are, are, I, I, are you also suggesting that without the window, are you suggesting that we are removing car service entirely?
I, I think if you had car service like a, like a more normal, more like what Meg I think was describing, and like, you know, like uh the suit, some of the stores, some of the um cars have, you know, this spot is for you, if you pull up to um, I'm trying to think of a restaurant that I've been to that has a car service, but I actually don't that much. So um, but like, if you go to one of the supermarkets, they have car service, you, oh no, I was at a restaurant on on Central Avenue. I was at a restaurant on Central Avenue and um, and they, during the pandemic, and they had a spot and you parked there and your food was ready at 3:05, let's say, and you parked there at 3:05 and it was brought out to you with 3:05. That would be the more traditional car service. So the designated spot, it says of parking five minutes for service or something like that. That would be a more traditional car service, and from my perspective at least. And from my perspective, and this is just a personal perspective, if you use the window in the way that the employee who brought it out to the car got the food from the window instead of having to go into the restaurant, I personally would not have a problem with that.
Look, Nick, did you get that? I just want to make sure you understood what
Personally, I don't know what any of the other board members views on that are. But yes, it could have car service, but um if you're going to have car service in the more traditional sense, then I think you, you have to think about the, where the designated spot would be.
Anyway, as Mr. Newfield last, I, I, again, I don't know if it was Mr. Newfield or Miss Jürgen, made reference to the door.
That's, that's what you guys had described the last time.
But we were talking about that, right, right. But we were expanding upon that, but we, we went right back to the window. So I just, that way we know how we can
Can I actually, can I actually step in and talk about that? Hi, I'm Amanda. I'm a chops architect and designer. We had that conversation quite a few times of what if that window became a door? And we accessed at that point. And my first thought was, that seems very unsafe to have a door randomly opening onto a main traffic launch. So then we said, what if we added, you know, exactly like what you said, some sort of crosswalk, some sort of hatching. And then it said, well, now again, we're blocking traffic for our customers who have parked and ate inside. And, and now we're kind of in their way, or we get the opportunity to use that, that new paved area, I'm gonna call it, for lack of a better term. I, I think, you know, we even said for a while, like, what if it's a Dutch door? Like, when does it become a counter in the field of architecture? When does it become a window? Like, what is an aperture?
Robin, Robin will not, at least for Robin, which I understand does not speak for the board, no person, no employee on the inside is allowed to hand across the threshold to a customer on the outside.
That, that's what it sounds like, right?
You want to have a car service, then the employee has to exit the restaurant, go over to where a car is parked, right? And then the food. And again, this is just Robin, I understand.
That's exactly what I said, actually. I said it was a surface with an employee on one side and a customer on the other handing that.
You did say that. You're right.
If you have even more traditional car service, we would have to consider, as you, as Amanda's pointing out, whether you have enough spaces, because you're not queuing and driving up, you would have to have spaces for the cars that got there and a safe way to get the food to them.
Yeah, I think that's also one of the reasons I think Brian might have dropped. Oh, yeah.
Robin did bring up an interesting idea, though, which
We actually
Cut me off whenever you want to cut me off.
Dennis is
Outside the window, the employee can be outside the window and then reach in and, and get it from another employee and then deliver from, from there.
I don't want to name drop another town, but we have been referring that to the Darien model that we are talking about for a different location.
Andrew, where should we go from here?
I, I'm going to suggest we, we, we adjourn. And I appreciate the opportunity if members of the zoning board and Chair would allow us to do so. Um, and obviously, any additional concepts that we may want to present, I will be in touch with Amber tomorrow or on Monday, just to get, you know, the date with which you would want to receive everything. I know that, that this has changed over the course of the last couple of months, so I want to make sure that whatever we propose, we submit it in a timely fashion so that you have the opportunity.
You realize that that may mean you don't get a decision until September.
Absolutely, Mr. Newfield. I mean, it doesn't make me happy, but you want to know something, I, I, this isn't about me being happy, it's about making this, try to get, we, we want it, see this through. And, you know.
Through with this thing, and, and you were to prevail, that would be one thing, or you prevailed in part and you were accepting of that, that would be another. And if you weren't, and you changed it, then you could come back, couldn't you? Because you would have changed your plan. I just feel like we put a lot of time into this thing, so I'm
Is it a possibility, Andrew? Is it, is, is one of the options for the board to approve our restaurant with car service? No window? Is that one of the things that they are allowed to do, or do they only have to
I, I believe so, without a window and with the uh, but I
You would have to satisfy that we see that the model of where the parking spaces would be, and then a sufficient parking, and
Now, that also brings me to the other point, though. If, if the parking component changes on that, Charles or, or Chair and members of zoning board, um, if we're factoring how many spots we would need for the seasonal outdoor seating, we just want to make sure, again, we, we have that luxury of having five extra spots, but we don't want to go over it if we're going to use a side door and deal with it, we need extra spots for that. So I just wanted to keep that in mind.
You're gonna have to figure that out, Andrew. That one I can't give you, tell you what you have to do. You're gonna have to figure out how it works.
Procedurally question, is the, is, Andrew, I'm just trying to drill down on Dave's point, like, should we adjourn? Or is, is, is it, is, is the board allowed to approve us for these things with these certain conditions?
No, not approving tonight.
I know not tonight, I know not tonight, but without our journey and having to come, come back.
Well, if we close it tonight, right? Then we're going to vote on the application, not this week. We're not going to vote tonight anyway.
Understand, understand.
We're not going to vote before July 22nd.
No, I understand.
So um, what would happen is, on the meeting at which we vote, or we might not even vote July 22nd, because if we have a lot of other things, we might just ask a draft, you know, come up with a tentative vote and ask for a draft resolution. But in any case, if we vote, we are voting on it as it looks today. So we could deny, you have, you're here for two applications. One is the area variance for the parking spaces, and two is the special permit for the car service. Um, and we would deny, we could, I don't know that we would, we could deny the special permit for the car service, approve this without any car service, um, and approve the area variance for the parking spaces. It is conceivable that some of the board members, and again, I haven't talked to them, as you know, we haven't deliberated, might feel, well, the whole application has to be resubmitted because um, this was one application, and if you don't have car service, I mean, I, I, my view is that if, if you took, if we denied the car service, you would just have a restaurant without car service. Um, and if we gave, if gave you the variance, you'd have a restaurant without car service, and that would be what we do. So we can, and, and so that might be what the board might vote on. So if you want us to close it today, we can close it today. I mean, if you're not interested in amending, then we would close it today, probably. And based on what you've applied today, we would vote on it.
Robin, if I could ask you, what would the case be if someone didn't get a special permit? They could still have people pick up their food at a restaurant from them, couldn't they?
Sure. People do, I mean, we have lots of restaurants where they don't
Where you, I mean, there's no prohibition against
No, I could, I could. I mean, I walk, I live close enough to this that I would walk there, but um, but if you were driving from further, you would, you could easily order like you do at a lot of restaurants. You drive, you park, you go in, you pick up your food. I mean, if you write Chipotle, which is the sort of the other place that, that, you know, is like, is almost the same as this in, in certain ways, um, right?
Don't tell them that, Robin, I'm a chair, I'm just kidding.
Um, you can walk. Alternatively, you drive up, particularly during the pandemic, people weren't eating in the restaurant, so you would drive up, you would go into Chipotle, you pick up your food, and you walk out to your car. You could certainly do that. There's a parking space. Or you could go, and during the pandemic, obviously, it was a whole different issue. But when Chipotle is now that it's open again, people can walk into it and eat in the restaurant. So yes, we could. Um, so, so we got to move this, so
Yeah, I understand, understand.
I'm asking you, Andrew, do you want us to close it and vote as it is? Or do you want to consider amending it for the next application? Do you want a 30 seconds to confirm offline with your client?
That would, my, my clients are all shaking their heads positive. Is that, Amber, can you accommodate that if we jump route real quick and come right back to you? I mean, th- this is a first for me, Chair, but I would be more than happy to do that.
Problem with it. I want to get this done, so
I appreciate, we really, I mean, I mean this on the bottom.
You got 30 seconds, go.
All right.
I think we've been on the board, so I think we as a board member, as a board, are going to close for five minutes. Let members of the board do things that members of the board might have to do after having sat here for three hours. Um, and we'll be back in five minutes, and you'll answer the simple question.
Stay on it. Justin and team, just
So you need to leave.
Yeah, go to the Google Meet, Andrew.
And so the hearing is, is, um, so the, the meeting is adjourned for
All right, Chop team, let's get on the Google Meet. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
I think it's five minutes. So um if board members would like to come back. If board members would like to come back. What happened?
We have a lot of items on for the next meeting.
I'm sorry?
We have a lot of items on for the next meeting.
Well, since I don't know how, I mean, honestly, I don't know if we might, if we're going to get through what we have to get through tonight, tonight. We'll have to see what time it is as we do the closed applications. If.
I got about 10:40, so all right, go ahead.
Yeah, so if we can't, I mean, here, we'll see how long we can go. There's a point at which we may just not be able to do everything. So, Mr. Spats, Mr. Spats and Chopped, are you back? We'd like to move on and continue if you've reached a decision as to what you're interested in having us do.
We are, Ms. Charo, everyone is coming back. They'll be back in about 30 seconds.
Okay, so I think we have our team back here. Do we have, is Nick and Justin on?
We're missing Justin and Nick.
I think they're waiting in the room, Amber, if you could let them in.
Yeah, Nick says he's there, so I guess Amber has to let them in.
Okay, great, thank you. Chair and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, we would like to move forward with the application. However, it would be with the removal of the window component.
So what will you do with the parking? Whatever you call that space.
We'd like to use that car service area as parallel parking spaces for car service. So we will not utilize a window, we will have.
I think, unfortunately, I think you're going to have to amend the act, the drawing to show us. Because I think we're going to need to see it, so I apologize, but. You, so someone's going to walk out from the restaurant, walk around the.
Robin, Robin, either they have to draw it or not, I, like, it works, discussion even longer.
I think you're going to have to, I think, right, that's why I started to say, I started to say, I think unfortunately, we can eliminate the car service and close and vote on it as is. Or if you want us to keep car service there, but in a different way, you're going to have to draw something and show it to us.
Okay, we'll go into, Justin, Nick, I'm reading the olive, you know, the tea leaves. And we're going to adjourn so that we can provide that to you. So you can have that in front of you and render a decision ultimately. Because we don't want to give up the, the car service completely component entirely right now.
Okay, so then let us adjourn this hearing.
Thanks, everybody.
And Amber, I'll reach out and, so I can get the deadlines for any additional recent, recent mittles, okay, please? I will definitely reach out to you. All right, thank you. It was an exhausting evening. We really appreciate your time and diligence. Team, let's reconvene on that number, okay, please?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Take care.
Good night.
Thanks.
Okay, we are up to the closed applications, so starting with the first closed application.
So I do just quickly want to note for 946 East Boston Post Road, the applicant did clarify today that they are withdrawing the application. Or they are not going to proceed with requesting an approval.
Oh, so, so that's out, so we don't have to vote on it?
Well.
They were drawing, so we.
It was still a res, I don't know.
Just, I just have a point of clarification. So they asked for an interpretation. Is that what they're withdrawing? Is their request, okay, and do we have that in writing?
I have that in an email.
Okay. Then it's more than appropriate to not act.
Fine, so then that, so, okay, okay, so doing the closed application, case number 1I2021, 946 East Boston Post Road. They have withdrawn their application, so we are not voting and it is done. We're over. Okay.
Didn't they indicate they were coming in with another application? I guess they were waiting for this, is that the idea?
That's what they said, they were going to come in with a use variance, but who knows? Maybe they've withdrawn it, they're just going to come back with a use variance, maybe they're not going to come back. Who knows? Okay, next, okay, the next application is case number 1A21, 2021, 506 Claflin. And. We have, I believe, a draft application, a draft resolution, do I remember correctly or not? I thought we didn't.
Not for Claflin, I don't think so.
I didn't think you did, it says so here, but I couldn't remember. So let's discuss that then, let us discuss the variance, this was an area variance. I'll give my two cents first, I thought it was fine. I actually did not have a problem, I didn't think that the increase was a significant increase. It doesn't decrease, it doesn't decrease the distance between the structure, it does increase the floor area, it does raise the height a little bit. I was not, I didn't think that the. The, the fact that, I was just okay with it, let me leave it at that. Anyone else want to just have their comments?
I think it's fine, I don't think it's substantial. I think for them to try to achieve this in any other way is much more expensive. But it's also basically insubstantial, the, the majority of what their plans are, are as right. I don't think will have any kind of adverse impact. I think that if they had raised a poll over the one little area that we're actually asking for the variance for, it, neighbors or other people would see that poll, but it really wouldn't obstruct any view. What's really obstructing the view is the hazard rate construction.
Anybody else on the board have any thoughts?
Yeah, well, I also note that they tried to accommodate the neighbors' concerns and they did go back and reduce the height a bit. And so they showed a lot of accommodation. And if you go to the spot, you know, there's a, it's, there's a lot of natural protection. And I think they've acted really reasonably and, you know, doing what they can to address their concerns.
Okay, I agree with what everyone else has said. I mean, it seems pretty small and they've been considered of the neighbors and. Yeah.
I will concur with what was just stated.
Okay, so Charlie, if you would draft a resolution for us for the next meeting in line with what we've just said.
Will do.
Okay, the next application is 130 Beach Avenue, which is an application for an interpretation at this point with a future possible variance. What does anyone want to say about, have any thoughts on this? You know, I'm looking at the application and I'm looking at what he applied for. He applied for an interpretation that the building inspector's letter is not related to the ZBA resolution. He's not asking for us to determine that the building in, at least, at least the, and I have to go pull up the application. But as I recall, he's not asking for us to overturn or decide that the building inspector decided too much. But an interpretation that it's unrelated to the resolution. So.
So what are you saying? So it's not a normal interpretation that it's a de novo review and that we would replace it?
I don't know what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that's what he's asking for. So if you think that what the building inspector did, for example, was more than he should have, that's not what he's asking for. Unrelated, he's asking for us to interpret that it's unrelated to the resolution. That's.
As I understand.
Anything else, Meg, that's all I'm saying, just making sure that we know what we're talking about.
As I understand it, when, when we are, are, are doing an interpretation, we're not hearing, hearing through a use variance. When we're doing an interpretation, as I understand it from the studies that I've done and the courses I took, is a de novo review. We, we do consider what was, what, what we were asked to interpret and our, our perspective on what we were asked to interpret. And if we are not in agreement with what we saw was the decision of the building inspector or the information provided or whatever official that we're, we're reviewing, that it is up to us to say what should have been there, what would have been the appropriate response. I'm wrong about that, I thought that's what is inherent in doing an interpretation as a ZBA.
Yeah, well, the letter from the building department was in response. And I think they acknowledged that in response to going back to the building department to ask them what to be done. So.
So, so if we say that we don't agree, that it, we agree with the applicant that it didn't relate to the resolution. I'm sorry, if I, that it wasn't appropriate, then if we go beyond that and we do say what would have been an appropriate, an appropriate response from the.
Well, or we say that it shouldn't, that it's, that it's reversed because it goes, it's not in response.
Or we say that it is, because the point isn't whether or not we think that was a reasonable. He isn't asking for an interpretation that it wasn't reasonable. He's asking for an interpretation that it's unrelated. So if we're going to approve the interpretation, that's exactly what he said. Then what we have to find out is that these requirements are unrelated to the resolution. Not that they're wrong, not that they're too much, not that there's something else, that they're unrelated to the resolution. And we can consider that however we want, and in that sense, Meg, you're right. But he's not asking for an interpretation of anything other than the relationship of these requirements to the resolution.
But I think you have to put it in the context. The board, the, the letter from the building department was in response to the board saying, you need, they, they'll tell you what has to happen. So they then do that in order to get in the response to our decision. And then they do that and he says, well, no, I don't think that's right. I don't think it is required under your, there's nothing else that came into this. No one said, oh, it was an addition, we just decided to do this. So I think then you set it aside if that's what you feel. I mean, this man doesn't have to be held to every standard that no other applicant. We've been, this has been hours and days on an application that moves faster than most tides go. And so I think this one is really basic. I think it's obvious what he, to me at least, maybe I'm missing the point, that he's saying, listen, you guys said X and Y. The building department spoke then, and then I got a letter which is different. So I think it's more than saying it's different, it's more say it's different, therefore it's, it, it should be set aside. I think there's a separate issue. And then do we say, no, it's not responsive? Or do we then go in and pretend we're the building department and say what it is and what it isn't? Anyway.
I, I, I understood, not just for this particular application, but that is a part of our responsibility. It's not simply to say we overturn that, but to say what we think should happen. When we interpreted, someone brought to us an interpretation about whether or not something needed a site plan. That's a little more clear, but we said that it was wrong to allow them to do work without the site plan and you needed a site plan.
I, I think.
Black and white, but in this case, so this letter was written because the applicant and because also it was the determination of the board that the building inspector would tell the applicant. It was an instruction of the, of, of, of this board, that the building department would give the applicant who had lost his appeal, the instructions on how to make his space zoning compliant. And he received this letter and now he's saying that this letter is not related to the resolution. I am asking, I would like to ask Charlie's opinion. We will have to decide how we all think about whether or not this actor is, is related and a good response to the resolution. And is that it? We can just set it aside or we support it? Or are we also supposed to have our own sense of what would have been appropriate for the building inspector to do?
And I'll let Charlie answer, but my only comment is the board specifically said in the resolution that we were not going to tell him what to do. If we at this point tell him what to do, then we are in fact overruling our own decision. And he is then appealing our decision he isn't, hasn't done. And therefore I don't think we can do that.
You asked Charlie that question last month and I think Charlie said that we could decide to direct and give more guidance.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we have, I guess one of the questions, do we, are we, one is, are we required to give some direction? Or do we have the choice, the discretion to give some direction when we didn't do that? Take that opportunity six months ago.
When we specifically said we weren't doing it six months ago. So Charlie, do you want to answer the questions that have been posed to you, please?
Sure, first, Amber, if you don't mind, just getting Mr. Spats out of the meeting, it's still showing up on my screen.
Amber, can you take him out, please?
So it all kind of goes back to this whole idea of res judicata, right? And whether or not this relates to your prior determination or it doesn't relate to your prior determination. The way I see it is this board and their prior determination left it up to the building inspector as to how to come into compliance with your prior determination. And then Frank, you came back with a list of, I forgot, six or seven items that the applicant would have had to do to get rid of that third dwelling unit that this board said was unlawful and that the Supreme Court upheld that determination. The applicant, in my eyes, is now appealing those seven items, saying, if I do these seven items, or rather, these seven items are unrelated to what constitutes a dwelling unit. And therefore I don't have to do these seven items to get rid of that third dwelling unit. So if this board, I believe, in a prior meeting, it was kind of the conclusion that res judicata doesn't apply here.
I don't think the board ever reached that, some of the board members said that, but the board did not reach any conclusion.
Right, and I, and I think that is a threshold question that, that should be deliberated. That, you know, it may be res judicata, right? If the applicant is saying, I'm not, I don't want to do these seven items, but I'm still going to, and, and that means there's still a third dwelling unit. This board should deliberate and say, well, maybe this is different from our prior determination. Because our prior determination gave no guidance as to how to get rid of that third dwelling unit that is unlawful. And if that's the case, this board could make a determination as to what he needs to do in your eyes to get rid of that third dwelling unit that you already found was unlawful. You can't go back and say that that third dwelling unit is now lawful unless you vote to do a rehearing. Now, the other thing that you, you should consider is the things that Frank put in his email determination, those seven items. A lot of those are related to the New York State Building Code. This board doesn't have any jurisdiction to hear appeals on New York State Building Code. The applicant has applied to the Department of State for those variances. And the Department of State has denied those variances and said, this really actually sounds like a zoning matter. The Department of State actually said, what it sounds like is the village needs to consider what needs to happen in order to get rid of that third dwelling unit. So at the last meeting, I think we discussed with Frank, item by item on those, you know, remediating factors. Could you have this in your house and not have it be a dwelling unit? Like the cabinets, I live in a single family home, I could put up, potentially put up kitchen cabinets in this spare bedroom I have. Aesthetically, it's not my style, but could it happen? And what, where do you cross the line into, this is now a third dwelling unit? The other question that came up is this code does permit, I, I believe, borders or rumors and borders. So, you know, what is the distinction between rumors and borders and a third dwelling unit? So that should also be considered. But I think this board should focus on, are those seven items that Frank mentioned, do you agree that those have to happen in order for him to get rid of that third dwelling unit? And I will say, this is one of the.
That one, I think we all agree on, on that part. I think we're all asking, are we then going to replace that with, with what he does need to do to remedy the situation?
You absolutely could.
Well, should we decide the first part and then discuss this part?
That makes sense to me.
That makes sense to me. Um, I, just a quick question though, Charlie. You know, I know we said in the resolution that the um. That Frank could make the decision on what constitutes, you know. You know, kind of remedy in the situation, but during um. During the hearings, I think at least Greta and I asked some pretty pointed questions about what they thought would constitute that. Does that have any bearing on this discussion now or our considerations?
So as the house existed with the three dwellings, when you reviewed it last year. Right? You found out that that unit was a third dwelling unit and that it was unlawful.
Right.
Certainly, something has to change. Because if nothing changes, then you are. In effect, reversing what you previously said.
Right, but I guess what I'm asking is during that hearing, you know, like we asked. Or I, I at least remember asking Ms. Mountain specifically, what would be required to change it in your mind? And she gave a very specific answer. So. Which is very different from what was later given. So I guess my question is. Does that have any bearing on our discussion now or should we just be looking at it with fresh eyes?
And uh, Mrs. Mountain is. Okay, um, you know, that was not an official determination in my eyes. I don't have the full facts there. Frank's email does somewhat constitute a determination. So um, I think you, you would be safe. Starting from Frank's determin- determination and not looking back in that instance.
Unless it was in the resolution presumably, if something was in the resolution, then it has, then, then that's it. Right? If it's, if it was something merely Ms. Ma- Ms. Mountain said that uh, she thought, then you're saying, we don't have to pay attention to it. But if it was in the resolution, then it is what it.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, so going on that premise and, and. I'm sorry?
And, and has anyone been inside this premises?
I think board members said that they'd been, some of the board members said they'd been in the house. Uh, before this, because they were friends with Mr. Tiker. I don't remember, I believe. And I could be wrong, I don't remember, but I believe some of the board members had been in those units.
No, I, I have been around in the front area. I've never been all the way inside or up into this.
I, I could be, okay. So, okay, so that answers your question.
I've been in um, I guess, Mr. Tiker's. Living space, but um, not, not the third floor.
So should we vote on whether?
I think we can, let's have discussion on it first. Let's not, we're not voting yet. Let's, right, the normal process is to discuss. So if anyone would like to discuss Mr. Um, uh, Building Inspector's letter and any of the specific. Findings and or the point that Charlie made about res judicata.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll just start with the, you know. The, sorry, the, the finding, the um, the Frank email, I think. I mean, I'm very concerned by this as a remedy. It seems very extreme to me. And I think it would be a really bad slip slope um, for, for people in this village. Um, to have to, you know, go to these extremes. So that's just. My two cents. Feel free to agree or disagree, everybody, but.
I, I think, you know, the common sense is. Which of these things makes it a third unit and which of these things do not? Clearly, the doors and deadbolt locks at the entrance make it a separate unit, not in fact is what the board found um, in the resolution. Uh, the walls that enclosed the previously opened stairwells, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. If that's part of what makes it a second unit, maybe yes. With respect to the kitchen cabinetry and other things. Um, you certainly can have a second kitchen. Uh, the problem as. I, I, I will say, my husband pointed out to me, the problem is the tenant. If the tenant wasn't living in a separate space, you wouldn't have any of these issues and having a second kitchen is fine. But you can't have a second kitchen for the use of somebody else because a rumor or border is generally defi- is. Uh, because you can only have one family in a single family unit. And um, a family is people sharing, sharing is a single household. And so if you have a separate kitchen that somebody else is using, it's a separate household. So um, you can have all these things. On the other hand, he does have to comply with the code. So with code, whether it's village, whether it's the bill, whether, if the building code requires any of these. Then just like anyone else, he would have to do it. If the building code does not require that he remove the two hundred and twenty. Electrical vote or backsplash outlets. Then I don't think it's a problem. I do think the third floor meter does have to be removed. Because of having a separate meter for a separate floor does really give the indication of a tendency. I don't think removing an electric line or a sink and capping plumbing is necessary. Because you could have a second kitchen. So, that's my thoughts.
Well, it might be, you know, a, a good thing to always look at is the definition of dwelling unit. And um, that's what Robin was referring to for those who aren't looking at that currently.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, is the, is the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Abby.
I was just making a joke that I think we all have memorized the definition of dwelling unit at this point, so, but I appreciate.
Yeah, I just would voice up a couple of quick comments. Um, I think much of this. Is the slippery slope and I don't quite grasp it. It has inferences that disturb me significantly. I never quite grasped. I mean, I thought Frank was very forthright. Looks to me like from what I've seen here, this was something he was told to, to work on and. Village manager, the village attorney, this, but I'm looking at this and I go. He's got to complete, he's got to have plans to complete. A proposed space in the first one. I don't understand what that guy's to do. Is, I didn't know it is an obligation as far as the electrical line. I was told last time it can be, it's capped, it's capped, you don't have to remove it. The uh, the sink and the faucet, I mean, I don't know, he's not supposed to have the kitchen, then the kitchen shouldn't be there. Um, he said, we have to have plumbing lines back to their source cap. I don't know if other residents, inhabitants. Occupants of citizens of Marineric have to do that. I've never heard of it. All wall-based kitchen cabinetry, I would only point out that if they're not in a kitchen, they're not kitchen cabinetry. They're called cabinetry. And that they're not a kitchen. And so just, it's not a garage cafeteria if it's in the garage, if it's in the kitchen. And counterclaims and outlets to be, and restore it to a den. You know, I don't know, we're gonna tell him what he has to eat for dinner. I get very upset with this. I find this offensive. Okay, I, we tell, you can't have a den there because you can't. And if you have a baby, you can make it a baby room. It's gotta be a den. Hey, I'm sorry, but this is out of the law. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna be a defendant on this thing. Remove the lower section of sheetrock walls. I was told that was to inspect. We could also rip the house down to inspect what's underground, but I really think it's that ludicrous. And I think, fine, you can inspect it. We can find more things then. Why don't we do that to other people when we've been? I've sat on this board for, I guess it's probably twenty plus years. I have had many people be accused of having an extra kitchen, having the multifamily. I've never heard in my life. We can rip down the walls, remove everything and make dens and remove locks. I mean, I think some of this, I mean, obviously if the kitchen is the issue, why? And there's no apartment, fine, but we're not telling someone to make a den. Not as long, I mean, that's fine. Point someone else on this board. I want nothing to do with this. The sheetrock, I just find this offensive. To remove sheetrock so we can inspect behind it? I see. I don't understand what that's for. Uh, remove the complete walls. Remove the complete walls that enclosed the previously open stairwells so that they can be inspected. Well, you know. Come in the half my house, rip out the walls. I mean, it's kind of a little toss in this. Remove the doors and deadbolt locks at the entrance of the third. I guess if that's necessary, fine, it's just there. A couple of items I don't have a problem with, but it, it seems to me like. The history of this has to be put into a context. There's obviously some acrimony here. I don't think there's much doubt about that. I've sat on this board for over twenty years and I have probably seen a hundred violations. Many of which get prosecuted. I have never seen one warrant where they've gone into a house with a warrant. So be it. I'm not saying they can or cannot, but. This now is a reaction. We're gonna rip down walls, open up things, create dens, remove things, you know. I, I gather this is a, just want to take the property away from him. That's what it looks like. I don't find this comfortable. I don't accept this. I think that. The reaction here should be like anyone else's. Hey, you have an extra dwelling unit there? You can't have it, okay? So zap it, get rid of the electrical thing, get rid of the separate locks on it, fine. You can keep your cabinets, because I don't care what you call them. And if they're in the house, they're in the house. They're a garage, they're garage cabinets. So that's how I feel. I have a question, but I think counsel is, has given input on that that I concur with now. I, I didn't originally and that is. I thought we could just, just say that this is not responsive, this is not what is necessary, which is what they were asked to do. But if we need to go into some points of it, then I guess we can explain why some of the points are what they are. And then I guess the. They'll deal with that. The village can appeal it, Ticker can appeal it, I suppose. I don't know. But such is life. I just find this disturbing and upsetting.
And I will, we'll say, and, and Frank, maybe you can help out with this. To the things that.
Counsel, I have a question for you before you go on, if I may, point of order on this. Since the building department is a party in this and since the hearing is closed on this. Is it proper for the, for one of the parties, where they're a direct party, to participate in discussion with us? And I don't know the answer, but I'm raising it because I think it's an obvious one if I was Mr. Tiger.
So, you know, this board does have a, a routine of not letting anyone speak once the public hearing is closed. I would say a majority of municipalities do not do that. And in fact, you can allow the applicant to speak throughout a hearing, no matter whether or not the public hearing um, is closed. Um, the same would go for the building inspector. However, you know, if, if the board is not comfortable with that, that, that's your determination. What I was going to say was, to the extent that there are items that they seek to be appealed. That relates to building code issues, New York State Building Code issues where inspections were needed or things were done without permits. That's not necessarily a zoning issue, right? Um, and that may not be appropriately before this board. Because if something's not permitted, the building department goes on and issues a violation and then. Kind of does a, a post hoc inspection of it and typically issues the building permit. Or plumbing permit, whatever the case may be. So the, the things that need to be inspected, they just may need to be inspected based on New York State Building Code issues. And are unrelated to zoning. So that's something you should also keep in mind as you go through each item.
Wasn't the purpose of this letter to respond to the Board of Appeals?
It's updated. Looking at the resolution, for example, one of his, one of the violations was a violation of the building code. With the alteration of the second floor of Unit B, this is the original application. By installing an electrical outlet and plumbing and creating an additional dwelling unit without permits. To the extent there were violations of the building code there. And if that's what he's talking about, then, then, then we can't do it. But to the extent he's asking somehow. Clearly, we can't make any decisions with respect to the building code to, to the extent that any of these findings are required. By the New York State Building Code. For example, if the New York State Building Code says that. Two hundred and twenty volt electric lines have to be removed down to the panel. I have no idea if it says that, right? I have no idea. I mean, I think nothing about it. But if, for example, it did say that, we couldn't say he doesn't have to do that.
If, if there's no requirement that it be removed, if I have a two twenty volt. I can leave it where it is and I have one in this house. And I'm arrested for it, so be it.
Dave, all I said was, if the building code says something, we can't say he doesn't have to do it.
We are speaking to what he needs to do in terms of the zoning code. So it's, it's. We are not saying yes or no. We don't say, oh, maybe because of the building code. We simply say, what do these things in terms of the zoning code? And in response to the decision of this board in the resolution needs to be done, what is appropriate? That's all. So it's, it's just sort of like off the plate, even trying to decide whether the, the purpose of it was a building code or not. And I feel strongly that Frank should not be invited to speak. No, no offense, Frank, but this is what we've always done. An applicant is not able here to, to respond, so I think it should just be amongst ourselves. But I appreciate your comments and what you're getting us to think of.
I, I don't think it relates to the fact that he's a party to this. It's been the board's position all along. That unless there was, you know, sometimes the very last minute, we've had a factual question, that's not what's going on here. Uh, you know, we don't take the building inspector or we don't take comments from anyone. That's the board's.
So I have to say, I, I concur largely with what Dave just said. I find that this is intrusive and has nothing to do with um, creating a dwelling unit. Um, so if I was gonna go through these things, um. I don't understand the purpose of number one. I don't understand why you would tell somebody that they have to take an electrical line down. That had, when I look at, when I read the definition of a dwelling unit, doesn't say, oh, you, if you put an extra certain volt. An outlet up in your space, then you just created a dwelling unit. Um. Um, perhaps consider the third floor meter, perhaps um, as something that is distinguishing, this is a separate. Um, livable space. Um. Talks about a kitchen sink and faucet. I don't see anywhere where you can't have, I don't see anywhere in the code where it says you can't put another sink. Whether you call it a kitchen sink or not, whether I want to put it in a kid's room because they make a mess. Or I'm a photographer and I want a big sink, or I have a bar and I want to have a sink in my den. I think that's jumping to say that then it's a kitchen because you put a, what you call a kitchen sink, even if it's a deep sink. Um, I think that's no, that has nothing to do in the zoning code. I don't find it in the definition of a dwelling unit. That you can't have sinks in other portions of your room, of your, of your living space. Um, same with cabinets, same with countertops. And again, talking about slippery slope, as Abby was saying, you start going in there and telling people where they can put a countertop or a sink. Or where they can put um, cabinets. Um, that's really kind of deep sake to me. I think that's going way past any authority that we have because it's not spelled out in the code.
If I just may say one thing, it, it, it's also important to think about context. Um, and I, and I'm not saying one way or the other, but for example, this.
If I, I think you're getting to what creates a dwelling unit? Is that where you're getting, because I, I'm not, I'm not going off the point there. Um, the sheetrock walls, um, definitely. Um, you can't tell people where they can put sheetrock. That does not determine a dwelling unit. Um. Uh, remove the walls on the stairwells. The stairwells have been there since he purchased the space. Um, which means before he even put any other person up in that space. Um, I think that's absurd to start telling someone you have to take uh, sheetrock off of hallways or stairways. Uh, then we get to the doors and the deadbolt locks. I know that in the resolution, um. Did we lose Charlie? Just looked up. Charlie's gone. So um, should we continue without Charlie or?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so I know that certain attributes were sold out in the resolution. I know that it talked about the fact that um, that the. The individual that's sharing the space with Mr. Tiker um, lived behind a locked door. Um, and it talked also about sort of an independent lifestyle and complete housekeeping facilities. And so I understand you have a space that's um. Uh, separated and has complete housekeeping facilities. That gives me pause because, because that's an attribute that I see in the definition of a. Of a dwelling unit is the complete housekeeping facilities. But to connect the fact that someone happens to be in a certain space behind a locked door. Um, I don't think that that makes something a separate dwelling unit. I know that the resolution. The gentleman was living there and then said in the totality of the use, it feels like it's a, it created a separate dwelling unit. I feel that if you take away some portions of, of the aspects of that space. You've then changed the totality of the use. So I don't think you need to take a door off. I don't want to start to go into people's houses and say you can't put a door someplace um, because you have a rumor behind it. Um. I understand that the board felt that there was complete housekeeping facilities and that this person was living completely separately. So I understand that there can be absolutely no stove or cooking facilities. I could see taking the, the electric meter away. Um, I could see rekeying all the locks to be the same door key. And that would also be in line with our. to be the same door key. And that would also be in line with our precedent for 1330 Mamaroneck Avenue, which is when we asked what formerly was a two-family home. We did ask that the doors, all the, the locks on the doors be keyed with the, the same key. We, we brought that up. We brought that information up. So, but to tell somebody they can't put a lock on a door. I, I don't see where in a, in a separate dwelling unit, and the definition of a dwelling unit, it said, oh, if you have a door and a lock and you have a kitchen sink that you've created a separate dwelling unit. So I think once you ensure that there are no complete housekeeping facilities, you take away the electric meter and you key the, the door locks to be the same. You have taken away the components that would have created a separate dwelling unit. Definitely the resolution had a footnote and confirmed that the, the code does allow rumors and borders. So I think that we don't, and there's nothing in it. There are no other conditions or parameters. It's an accessory use that should be in that space. It doesn't say where they can live or they can't live. So I have no problem with, with. I don't feel like we should go farther and say where the gentleman should live that shares the apartment with the with Mr. Ticker.
Sure. Can I just add, add one thing? Maybe Meg could comment on, on number three. It says, remove the kitchen sink. Now, since there can't be a second kitchen. Right?
Doesn't say you can't have a separate kitchen.
Okay. But it says you have to remove the kitchen sink. Does that mean there can't be a kitchen in this place?
As I understand it, it's removed. It doesn't say in the, in the definition of dwelling unit, you can't have a separate. And it says you
It doesn't even say you can keep a kitchen sink. It says remove the kitchen sink and faucet. You have to remove the kitchen sink and faucet. Now, if you're only going to have one kitchen, does that mean that's the kitchen sink you have to remove in the kitchen? See, what it should say is, if you want to say one kitchen, which I don't agree with, as you know, but then it should say only one kitchen. This says remove the kitchen sink. So I don't know what does that leave somebody with? If there's a kitchen sink in the condo, then that's not proper? I, I just think that the goal here, and Meg, you said it perfectly. It's not supposed to have another unit there, right? That's the thing.
I'd like to read from the resolution. Whereas the board makes the following findings and interpretations, findings, determinations, that following determinations, findings and interpretations. Photographs documenting walls enclosing a previously open stairway and door with deadbolt locks all constructed and installed without any permits, comma, which serve to separate the second and third floors of the duplex by providing direct distinct entrances for each floor of the duplex from the second floor landing. Therefore, the resolution specifically said that the enclosure of the previously opened stairway and doors with deadbolt, of, of enclosure of the previously opened stairway and the doors with deadbolt locks were were, were part of the evidence that he had a separate unit. That is a finding from the resolution.
I understand. It doesn't say in the resolution, this door wall went up, therefore it is a separate dwelling unit. It was part of a list of things which then concluded the totality of the use.
No, that's not what happened. The specific statement says.
I'm sorry, Robin. That's how I interpret the resolution. It had a list of findings. It had a lot of findings. People go upstairs and they don't read, you know, there was a lot of findings in here and you, and the, as a result, all of them, including the complete housekeeping facilities, turned this into a third dwelling unit.
Well, that's correct. There were, but there was a specific finding that the enclosure of the stairway and doors with, and the doors with deadbolt locks serve to separate the second and third floors of the duplex by providing distinct entrances. So that made us, the resolution made a specific finding about the doors and stairwells.
So I, I understand as a, because finding, I think that's pretty worrisome that you're going to tell somebody you, if, so whether that means whether someone lives there or not, like if you put a door, you happen to live in a, in a very, a vertical home and you put a door and a lock that separated your third floor from the second floor, you're not allowed to do that because that made dwelling unit?
I think if you didn't have someone living there, the issue here is that what can you do without someone living there? If he got, if Mr. Ticker got rid of the tenant who lived on the third floor, then we would have no issues. So we can't say, well, it's you who are living by yourself, do these things. It's okay. But because he does them, he can do it anyway because someone else, but that's not the scenario we have here. We have here a scenario with someone who is determined by the board to be an illegal tenant. There, that's done. It's been done. Therefore.
I'm sorry. You didn't want it to be an illegal tenant. You found it to be a third dwelling unit. You didn't find him to be, you said there were rumors and borders. You didn't say he was an illegal tenant. You said the way in which he was living was zoning noncompliant, but you didn't say he was an illegal tenant.
So, yeah. So can I just, can I just ask something? So I, so Meg, I agree with you about the totality of the evidence. And I really feel like that's how we were looking at it. Because you can take any one of these factors, like we've been discussing, like the door of my office room, right, has a lock, like that doesn't make this a separate dwelling unit. It just gives me a lock. So, so I agree with you about that. But I am curious. David, you mentioned having past instances like this. What in your recollection was done to remedy these past illegal dwelling units?
Usually they were to cease operating that way. And so some proof of it. And my recollection historically was in the building department would sometimes just go over to make sure that it wasn't being used. But usually you would take them at their word. In some cases, when you had a, something come up, I can recall where there was a persistent problem, it would be a, there was a covenant put on the property that it was not for an additional unit. I think they would be the type of things that in discussing, you would say, well, he's going to have to show this. He's going to have to show that he's not using it. And that there's not an operational, some of the indicia that were mentioned. Nothing that would compare to, you know, I mean, the removal of things in law and I mean, this, this, this is a different planetary system, to be perfectly blunt. Whether I'm right or wrong, it's still my opinion. I just think that, so you, you find a methodology. I mean, how do we do it with others? When someone violates a side yard, you know, I mean, we've got a responsive building department. Frank's excellent. You call up and you say, listen, and I call friend, I have a neighbor design, I say, listen, is this okay? Is it wrong? Do they have a permit? And they don't go, well, okay, here's what we have to do. They go over and you deal with it like you do with people in your community. Whether you happen to like them personally, politically, emotionally, or any other way. Fine. I think this is a complex situation because of the use of the phrase borders. Um, I really do. I, I, and I think the, the, but they've come up with the indicia, they've found it to be improper. Fine. So what do you do? Okay. Stop doing that. You cannot have another dwelling unit in there. It's that simple. I, I've never, that's why. So that would always have been the approach. And then you would look at it. I do recall covenants and I do recall this. And if, I think on a couple of occasions where they didn't comply, then there was something filed in the village court with them and they would have their hearing and, and they would come in before us and go back and forth between who was going to hear it. But I mean, I think, and I, you ask an excellent question. And I think the answer is, you deal with it like with some level of normalcy. Your kid comes in and he ate a cookie. Okay, I'm taking off two fingers. Yeah, right. They'll put you away. I mean, they should. And it's like, there's got to be a level here of understanding that. You, you read this and to me, it's, it's disturbing. And I really must say that. That's the only word I can say. And I, and I thought you said it brilliantly when you said it. It is, what, what is this going to be? And there's a reference in here to someone has to go and there can't be quartered. There can't be some painting company here. I mean, I don't know what this is about. I mean, it's and people have a right to utilize their property. It is a constitutional element. And I think that you have the right from zoning, since you could be Amber, et cetera, to, to go forward and to have normal requirements that are for the betterment of the world and for the community to reflect its, its, its its values, its decision on how things should be planned and done. And they should be done with appropriate permits and requirements. I'm not being cute about that. But when somebody comes to the zoning board, it's not a gotcha. And now, now we want you to bring in your first warrant. I mean, it's like, what's next? I don't get it. I really don't. I mean, I have, we all have, if we all live in Mamaroneck and you have towns and you have neighbors, come on, we've all had little issues, whether it's that, my property, whether it's not. I had it recently with the town, with the village, and I called the village up. I said, listen, I don't know. I was just, how close can he do what they're doing? Is it okay? I, I don't want, and I told the guy, listen, I'm not on your case, but if you can do it, God bless you. And if you can't, then God bless me. But they work out normally. And this is on a path that does continue because I would have thought, okay, he's, I don't know. Is, is he using it improperly now? I have no idea. But, and, and I think that there's some aspect of this that I find disturbing that the technicalities to him are held very detailed. And yet I see applicants come in here. Well, you know, I didn't mean this. Can you give me a variance? Can you modify this? Can I amend this? Can I do that? Sure, sure, sure. Well, you know, he doesn't have a battery of architects and accountants, et cetera, lawyers at this. So anyway, I'm sorry. I answered you far too long. I apologize.
No, I appreciate it. I think it's helpful because I think it's really important that whatever we decide is really consistent with, you know, as consistent as possible with what we've, we've historically done. So.
I asked the chair a question once. I, I think it was really just the other day. Have, has anyone ever seen a case where warrants were used? And I'd never, I mean, and I've seen cases where they went in, they went, they go to town, they, they go in, they make an application, they, they bring a petition village court, they, they.
Dave, Dave, I, I don't know the answer to that, but if you have, if the issue of the warrant is passed, that was possibly underlying the original resolution, there's been a resolution. So I don't know. I didn't, I don't know. You know, the question is, I don't know the answer. I have no idea whether it applies. But I think it's not relevant to the decision we have in front of us today.
Yeah. Can we go forward? And I think a majority of the board seem, they seem to agree that the, the building department overreached in its interpretation of the resolution. So if that's the case, then the next part is for the board to decide whether they think it would be helpful to give some more specific guidance to the building inspector. You know, we're just, it'd be nice to, yeah. We can move along with this and it'd be nice, it'd be helpful for the applicant and it'd be helpful for the building department and be helpful for the community to have some more specific guidance on what would be a legal use of a rumor and a border. You know, for those, those people who want to use that accessory use and know what's legal. So it'd be nice to do that.
I think the first thing that we have to do is go through each of these seven findings. These steps, because he's appealing seven specific requirements and make a determination for each of these determination, for each of these specific requirements as to whether we think that was a reasonable interpretation by the building code. And with respect to each one, if we find it was not reasonable, then it's
Sorry, I'm sorry. You said by the building code. You meant by the zoning code?
I'm sorry. Building inspector. The building inspector applied, said, these are the ways to comply. I think we have to go through the seven requirements that the building inspector set forth, determine whether or not for each of these specific requirements, because there are specific requirements, we think these are appropriate. If we think they are appropriate, they stay. If we think they're not appropriate, then we remove them. And then possibly at that point, we can decide whether there's anything else we want to tell them or not. But I think that's the way to approach is we go through the specifics because there are specifics here.
So we're seeing whether or not they're appropriate in response to the resolution, correct? We are not talking about whether or not they are appropriate in terms of understanding the building code.
Yeah, I was just going to add that caveat.
Correct.
It's required by New York State.
Okay.
So number one, I, I think that
I have one question to the chair. Is the third floor, there's a reference here to somebody would have to live in the second floor apartment.
What do you mean someone has to?
If you take a look at what's attached, what we got here is on page one or three. It's a, it's an email. Mr. Ticker saying, if you want to keep the tenant border. It's interesting how tenant border, this is the building department. So then they, they use that into, they use tenant slash border in the residence. He would have to live in your second floor apartment where your kitchen and bath facilities and reside as a common household residence or sleeping place. So does that mean that I can't use, he can't use the third floor? Did the board decide that?
I don't think that's, first of all, I'm not sure that's, we don't have to make that decision because that wasn't part of the appeal. But the second, so, so, but I wouldn't agree that he has to live on the second floor. There's nothing that says he has to live, nothing in the code, nothing in the resolution that said he had to live on the second floor.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is all part of the package that I got. So it's, it's, it's.
It's, it's hard to.
It's the November five email. Which basically says you can't occupy, your tenant, a border would have to live on the second floor.
Okay. Well, I, I don't think that you said, we can make, we can say you can't use the third floor. So I don't have, I don't have
Yeah, he is appealing both the letter and that email.
I didn't look, double check the email, so I have to go pull it up.
I mean, not appealing. He's, he's, he asked for a request.
Right.
And we have one from the, the village manager saying, I would say he needs to remove the door and what is left of the kitchen by Monday. A rumor has to have access to his kitchen and fridge.
I'm looking for the November fifth email. Oh, there it is.
And by the way, you said earlier about this was separate from the zoning board. But if you take a look, the letter here is October 22. There's a November five letter, email to Mr. Ticket as well. Zoning board resolution directed you to bring the third floor dwelling unit into conformity. Nothing much. These are attachments. Was this October 22 letter purportedly sent on October 22? Did someone challenge the date? Do you remember?
No, nobody challenged the date. Okay. So if we're going through the specific items, so number one. One of the things that, that the resolution said and that the, that the board found was that he had done certain of this work to, in violate, without getting permits. Forgetting what the work is, just he had done certain of the plumbing work and certain of the other work. Whatever we determine as to whether or not he has to make any of these changes in order to comply with the requirement of not being a separate unit, that would be, we cannot, we cannot and we should not and cannot say he doesn't have to comply. So if he put in something without a permit, he still has to get the permit, even if we decide that he doesn't need to have, remove it to comply with the
But Meg addressed that. We're not, we're not asked to, we're not opining.
I'm just saying that, we're not saying, but we always say in our resolutions, we always say in our resolutions that the, our determination does not affect his need to comply with other provisions of the code. So the only thing we are finding is that in order to come, to demonstrate the existence of a sec, of a, not a third unit, he has to do this. But for example, to the extent that the code requires certain things, whatever the code requires, we're not making any decisions about that.
I thought we're making decisions about the zoning code. We can clarify that that's what we're saying, but I also think that
That, so going through the first one, which is what I said. So the first requirement, which says that supply architectural drawings showing the partial second floor and stair and complete, I don't think that's a requirement in the code. I don't think he needs to. There's nothing in the zoning code that requires, um.
Or nothing in our decision that requires, right?
Nothing in our decision. I don't know about the code because the zoning code, when you file an application for something, you do have to file drawings, so we can't say there's nothing in our code that requires filing of drawings. When you file an application for, for zoning, to, to show zoning compliance, you're filing drawings. So, um, the, whether or not he needs zoning, whether or not he needs architectural drawings or not doesn't, is not determinative. Whether or not he needs architectural drawings is not related to whether or not it is a third unit. With or without architectural drawings, it is a third unit.
This asks the things that have to complete third floor proposed finished space. What is the proposed space? What is being finished? I have no idea.
I, I, I don't know either, but my point is only about, we can't say he doesn't have to provide architectural drawings to demonstrate compliance with the zoning code. So to the extent we're saying, if he, when, when you normally file an application to show for, for building permit, some of which is compliance with the zoning code, you file architectural drawings to show what you're doing. That's what you have to file. We're not saying he doesn't have to file architectural drawings. And if he doesn't file architectural drawings, he can get his permit. All we're saying is, I mean, I would say that this first thing doesn't make any sense. That's what I would say.
Okay, so we can move on. So I think we're all in agreement.
We agree.
Number one is not by the zoning code or by the resolution.
Number two, I think that, I don't know, I would say the zone, he has to remove the separate third floor meter because to me, you only have a separate meter when you have a separate tenant. And therefore, that is clear indicia of a separate unit, and I think it is perfectly appropriate to remove the third floor unit meter.
Okay, and that for project.
But I don't, I don't believe he has to remove the twenty-two twenty electric line.
You said, the chair didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
And, and he doesn't need to remove the backsplash outlets.
Correct. Um, he, the kitchen sink, he has to remove a, I, I don't think he has to remove the sink. Um, because you can have two kitchens in a dwelling unit. Uh, so you don't have to, having two, having two kitchens doesn't, is not, does not prove, it doesn't negate. You can have two, the existence of two kitchen sinks might mean it's a separate unit. It might mean it's not, it doesn't mean have anything to do with whether or not it's a separate unit. So I don't think the requirement of removing the kitchen sink is.
But did you understand my point, though, that by saying remove the kitchen sink? No, you're not even leaving a kitchen.
You're being very, yes, but, but, you know, um.
Yeah, alright.
Um, so he's, he's only, so, okay.
I think you should, yeah, I, I think we should also preface this by saying that he can't have a multi-family, so, alright, but yeah.
I hate to say it multiple times, can only have, um, remove, will move all wall and base kitchen cabinetry and countertops. He certainly has to, um, he, he did nothing in the code that says he has, and there's nothing that we said that says he has to remove all cabinetry or countertops. I do think he has to return it, rem- remove it from being used as a kitchen for a separate uh, tenant that he has to do. So however we want to say he has to do that, I'm not sure, but that's what he has to do.
Well, I think, you can't use, if he can't have a kitchen, I don't think you have to remove. It said, was it? Remove all wall and base cabinetry.
Yeah, I don't think that's the do.
Yeah.
We all agree that he doesn't need to do that, but I, I don't understand why it's complete housekeeping facilities. It doesn't say you can't have a second kitchen, so I don't know why you need to, you can't use something as a kitchen if you don't provide it with complete housekeeping facilities. The resolution said it had complete housekeeping facilities, as long as it doesn't have complete housekeeping facilities. I don't know why he can't have a kitchen in another room.
Let me ask this question. What's the difference between determining that it had complete housekeeping facilities back in two thousand and twenty versus it having complete housing, housekeeping facilities now? Can't have, it can't have a stove or an oven?
We found that without the stove or oven, it was still complete house, separate housekeeping facilities. That's what the board found. So merely the nonexistence of a stove or an oven is not enough to make it, but he has to remove something.
That's a, that's a big chunk, so I think that the village would like to know then what create, what made it complete housekeeping facilities? It was a kitchen sink? That was the piece that made it, turned it into, because that's gonna, that's gonna impact a lot of residences.
Because it was, I would think because it was used by a border, because it was used by someone else, and it's not just a facility, it's the utilization of it as a separate unit.
That is exactly right. That's exactly right.
We say he doesn't have to remove it, but if he would like to use this space for a rumor or tenant, he would need to remove it. That's, have to remove it, just.
If it was you, if it's not used for a tenant or a, I mean, not for a border, if a border is not used in the place. Yeah.
I just think it's careful that we don't start saying you can't have a second kitchen and the kitchen is determined by whether or not you have a sink in it, that, that's a.
Charlie, what happens if I have two, two, two set, two kitchens in my house? Which, one is like a bar kitchen, one's another kitchen, whatever, I have two small, one small one. And later on, I just have a border. Is there anything wrong with me telling the border to use one of them?
Um, I, I think, I think the question is what makes somebody a border or rumor? And the concept of a border or rumor, as I understand it, is that he's not a separate housekeeping unit. He's really in your household. And to the extent where somebody is saying to this border or rumor, you use that kitchen, I'll use this kitchen. We're saying he's not a border or rumor, he's another tenant, and that's.
I think we're starting to.
Like they're answering, answering what David asked, answering what David asked, Meg, answering what David asked. I think the answer is having, definitely having a separate.
We can't rehear the case. I don't agree with you, and, and now you're, you're, you're discussing things that were already discussed in the case, and I think we have to be careful that we're not rehearing the case.
Right, okay, alright, so.
So I know that Dave asked that question, but I think we need to be careful and stay away from topics generated the resolution.
What about making a den? Do we, do we agree that that's not relevant?
No, it doesn't have to be a den.
I don't think there's anything about removal that he has to remove the section of the sheet right walls to expose penetration. I don't think he needs to do that. Um, the, the comment about fire caulking and inspecting is a separate unrelated, I would just say it's unrelated to the uh, village, to the zoning requirements, doesn't need to do it for zoning compliance. I think that's what we just, we just say that about.
All thing is.
We don't have to say what, what else it relates to.
I do think he has to do six and seven. I think those are definitely what the board found to be indicia of a separate unit, and he does have to remove it.
I, I understand you, I have a question. But I don't think that you made the finding that that's what created the separate dwelling.
But I just, uh, I think what would be really helpful here, because obviously I, I have a feeling I'll be directed to prepare a resolution, consideration at the next meeting. I would like to do some legal research on the very good point of what is the effect of that specific language in the prior resolution on these two issues, number six and seven?
Right.
Um, you know, and that can be something we can also discuss in more detail in attorney-client privilege. Um, but I think that does warrant a degree of legal research on my end.
Okay, then, then do, then please do that. So, um, I think based on what we just said is, some of these things, can I just sum up, and if you disagree, that's fine, and Dave, is some of these things the board members agree on. Um, some of them, we don't, but that's fine, but, um, and that with respect to these two, we're not reaching any conclusion because um, Charlie needs to do legal research. Would that be correct?
Yes, but I also say that Frank, Frank says here for number six, he has to remove complete walls that enclosed previously opened stairwells. The stairs wells were not open when the applicant purchased the apartment. So which stairwells that were previously open is he referring to? He's referring to a space that was previously open, but that they existed in the state that they're in now when the applicant purchased it and before a roof or border went up there. So I understand that he wants to open up something that was previously open, but that would have been prior to the applicant actually purchasing the apartment. So that's why I don't think this makes sense.
Well, the other thing is this, if you, if you, if you, Rob and you earlier talked about the indicia of all these different things add up to being something. If, if it was certain that there was no one else living there, would that matter?
Yes, yes, unfortunately, I think it does. I mean, the problem is, we're trying to answer a question of what shows, if, if I have, if I turn my third floor and I let my kids, um, if I put a sink up there for whatever use I put a sink, and I put some separate cabinets up there, and I put all kinds of, I don't know what else to use, a two hundred and twenty volt, volt, um, uh, electric line for, I put all these things.
Your laundry, you put your laundry up there and you had your dryer up there.
Okay, and so when I put my two hundred and twenty volt and I do all this, that seems fine, you know, that, but I don't have anybody living there. I mean, my kids are living there, they're clearly part of my household. I think we're fine. If however, I start renting that out to someone else, that's a whole different issue, and we have to look at it differently. And I think to try and say, we can't look at it differently because he's renting it out to someone else, is kind of playing fast and loose with what's going on. I think we have to take it. He is renting it out to someone else. And if he weren't renting it out to someone else, there'd be no issue with a lot of these things. And we can also just say, how does he get rid of the second separate unit? He gets rid of the tenant, and he doesn't have anyone living up there, and then he doesn't have to make.
I, I just, I just don't think that.
I don't think we want him.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get that out of your resolution, out of the resolution of the board that a tenant living there created a room turned into a separate dwelling unit because it was occupied by someone. I see it as a physical facility. It's a phys- physical construct. And you, and you named all these things that, that with the totality of the use created a separate dwelling unit, but I don't see anywhere in the code where it says if you enclose stairways leading up to a space that has a door on it, that that created a separate dwelling unit. And I think that that's, talk about a slippery slope. You're really getting intrusive into what people can or cannot do. If you're telling him he can't have a kitchen, you're already saying you have to take out some of the aspects of a kitchen. He has no kitchen up there. So he has no housekeeping facilities up there. He does not have complete housekeeping facilities. Why in the world would it matter where there's a, a wall on a stairway or a door to the space that doesn't have a kitchen in? Just because before you think he did it the wrong thing, so now you don't trust him, so you're gonna, you're gonna take some construction away to make sure it can never happen again? I don't think that that's in, in the, our power to do.
I don't, I, I totally disagree. I think it's very clear that having a, a door with a deadbolt lock clearly indicates you've got a third unit and, um, period. The only time you have that is to separate the units from one to another, and.
You can separate it.
And you can't have a. The fact that you have a, what the code, what the board found before, and it specifically said in the resolution, specifically said the determination, the board makes the following determinations, findings and interpretations. Documented walls enclosing a previously open stairway and doors with deadbolt locks which serve to separate the second and third floors.
You read this before, we heard.
I understand that, but you seem to.
The thing is, it was a separate dwelling unit, not that it was a separate. Nothing in the code says you can't have a wing of your house that you have separated and you let your in-law stay there, or you even rent it out to somebody. I don't see anywhere, even in the resolution. It was a totality of the use which included complete housekeeping facilities, which you found a kitchen with a sink, i- is complete housekeeping facilities. If that is not there, then it's a section of your house, that yes, it is a separate section of your house, and we're telling people, uh-oh, but if you have the, if you put somebody in there, um, I think that might be misused. It can't be a separate dwelling unit if it doesn't have the housekeeping facilities.
I'm sorry, Meg. You were separate, you were saying, we found this whole indicia, but you're gonna just pull out the separate, the kitchen sink and the separate kitchen, and that defines it. No. We found X number of things and it was all of this indicia. So I would say arguably, he has to remove all of those things because all of those were indicia to make a totality. And now you're saying, well, we're gonna take it, we're just no longer, it's not gonna be, and we can't do that. We found, I don't know, four things, five things, six things, the totality. Now you're saying, oh, well, if we're gonna take out one of these, now you're asking us to really change what we're doing, and I'm unwilling to do that.
No, I think we found a lot of findings, and it included complete housekeeping facilities. It's a necessary for a separate dwelling. If there's no housekeeping facilities, it can no longer be a separate dwelling unit. Now it is just, you're penalizing this person, but you're, you're, you're just trying to force, I, I don't know why, but you're taking walls down, it's sort of like taking out the cabinets and the counters. Why in the world would you take down drywall on a wall and take a door off to, to a, a section of the house that doesn't have complete housekeeping facilities behind it?
As I understand, I did some research on literature and borders and tenants, and it comes down to the basics that I was able to find some articles. With that, you can have, a, a border has a private bedroom. And he may lock it, just like anyone can lock it. Because, because he's a border, he doesn't lose the right to have a private bedroom. But the rest of the house is a common kitchen facility, a common living area. So that what he gets is a private room with common areas to be shared. So, I don't know, did, did, did you guys make a finding on that, that, that he couldn't have a lock on the door in his bedroom?
Yes, I read, I read it three times.
I think that's off the, and I guess, I understand what you're saying. So you're saying a border cannot have a private, cannot have a lock on their door?
It wasn't on the bedroom, though, Robin.
It's not the bedroom. We said, this was, this was a, he, there was a lock on the door to the third floor, which separated.
I didn't ask that. I said, can he not have a lock on his bedroom door?
Absolutely can have a lock on his bedroom door. I don't think there's any restriction on a lock on the bedroom door.
Word, word.
So, so can I, because it's getting a little late. I'm just wondering, um, Charlie, what do you need at this point from us to get, like, what do we need to do to get to move this?
Going.
I think I have enough information, um, to get a draft resolution going that I can share um, for comments. Um, I also, you know, I, I wanna do some research on um, what's in the resolution. I also wanna revisit the court's decision which upheld that resolution and what the basis for, um, that court upholding that resolution, to see if they mentioned any of this. It's been a while since I read that decision. Um, and then, you know, you guys.
I, I have to say, I have to say the court's decision was based on an affidavit that was not part of our public hearing and was not part of the resolution. So I think you, you need to be cautious when you are researching how the, the court upheld it. It was with a document that actually was a personal document affidavit and was not the, uh, decision of the board in total.
Excuse me, just to correct that, it was not a personal affidavit. It was, what, what was done is, as is done with any of these kinds of, of, of applications and responses, the, uh, an affidavit was filed with the, uh, papers.
Sure, no, I.
Affidavit was filed that was not agreed to by anybody else on the board and which contained new information that was not in the resolution.
So I will take that under consideration when I review the file. Um, but then I've, I have approached that topic many times already in my ten-year career. Um, so I, I'm confident I'll, I'll be able to take a look at that. And I think this board will probably be focused with a draft resolution in front of it. Um, and you can respond to some things are in writing. Um, so I think that'll go a long way with helping us come to a resolution here.
Great, okay, let us move to the next application. Thanks a lot, Charlie. Um, okay, we are up to case number four.
Hi, sorry, are, are we going to, is, is it the board's objective to finish the rest of the agenda tonight?
I don't know. We'll see, we'll keep going a little bit and we maybe have to stop.
What's the next one?
Okay.
Um, yeah, one hundred West Boston Post Road, there was a draft resolution. Does anyone have any comments to the draft resolution?
Um, I would like to add to the resolution, um, that any, if any music or, you can, I'll just spew it out, and Charlie, hopefully you'll write it better. But if any music or amplified sound is indoors, windows and doors must be closed by, I think we normally say ten PM. I would like it to be consistent with what we've said in other resolutions, said if they're playing something inside, that the doors and windows have to be closed, and I believe. I would like it to be consistent with what we've said in other resolutions, said if they're playing something inside, that the doors and windows have to be closed, and I believe it's ten P M. And that no music or amplified sound is permitted outside the building.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine, um, anything else? All right, so I'm gonna make a, make, make a.
Move. I'll move.
Wait, is this, is this, which one, this is a hundred, um, west.
Yeah.
Is this a west, okay, um, just a little nitpicky thing, Charlie.
Sure.
I think that, um, the last nail there, wherefore be it resolved, you, you have site plans, but you don't define it.
Okay, I'll.
Also a nitpicking thing on the agenda, I don't think we should put down, we will discuss the proposed resolution. Isn't the resolution non-public until?
No, the pub, the, under, the, the resolutions have all been made public.
That's New York State open meetings law.
Right.
A proposed resol, a draft resolutions are?
Anything discussed by the board has to be made public.
No, no, I know it is, but we're discussing it at the meeting, and this says we're discussing the proposed resolution, it isn't a proposed resolution before the meeting, is it?
Yeah, there's a draft resolution, Charlie wrote it up, it's in the, it's in the public. Okay, so Dave, you made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so this is a motion to. To approve the resolution with the amendment, the correction by Greta and the amendment by Meg. So Dave has moved, uh, uh, so now let's vote on it, Abby.
Yes.
Dave. Greta.
Yep.
Meg.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so that's. Okay, the next one. Which is one S, and, and going to what, what, um. Amber said, let's see if there's any that can, if everything that can be done quickly, let's just do, and if any are gonna take us long, let's maybe not, but. One S twenty twenty one, six twenty East Boston Post Road, which was the dental equation sign variant. We have a draft resolution.
I do have some comments. I don't know if anybody else has some, um, in the first paragraph. Sort of in the middle, if you're looking at, the board approves a requested area variance for leisure construction of. And I changed it, Charlie, you had written two facade signs. And I changed that to an accessory facade sign is what we're giving the variance for. An accessory facade sign on the rear of the building equal in size to the business's primary facade sign facing the principal street. I just made a distinction between the two signs.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then, a number one, the requested area variance to permit an accessory facade sign equal in size to the business's primary. Facade sign on the premises, again, I'm making it, I'm just clarifying that that's actually was the variance, it was the. The fact that the accessory was smaller.
Okay.
And then, um, I did have comment on number two, that the benefits sought. I wrote, instead of your, in paragraph, I replaced your paragraph with, that the benefits sought by the applicant to properly identify the location and nature of the business. Could be achieved with zoning compliant signage, it could be, so I disagreed that it couldn't be sought any other way, I actually thought. It could have been, the benefit could have been, um, zoning compliant, it just isn't, so I disagree that it couldn't have been.
I think that's right, I think that is right, he could, the identification of the premises could have been done either way, it was just. I, I would say, while it could have been done, that, um, it's not that it couldn't be done, it's that. Given that there is really a separate, that the parking is in the rear, that identification in the rear is, um.
That large, but, but it's not substantial, it's in line with the style of the, of the other signs there. So we don't find that as a detriment on the impact, but I just had a problem with that they couldn't be zoning compliant, so I think you, you could have put a smaller sign and they actually. It still would have marked the doorway. Understand what I mean? Like, I don't know what the benefit, the benefit was to make sure people can see it, they can see it even better if it's bigger, but it's not like they couldn't find it if it was the.
Benefit is so you can see it from the road.
No, no, this is the one in the parking lot that we gave the variance for. I thought. We're making the one in the parking lot as big as the facade sign that they, if they have.
Yeah, so you could see it from the road from, um, from South Berry.
Okay, okay, if that's what it is, so that you can see it from a distance. I thought it, I don't know that that's the purpose of that second, I thought that was so that you can find it in the parking lot, that's okay, fine. Okay, I retract, retract.
Yeah, well, I have, I have a question, Charlie, you know, I, the way I saw this application, we basically had no choice. Because of the precedent. In that exact location, we, the board had previously given a variance. So is it appropriate in this resolution to reference the fact that there is a very specific precedent that we were obliged? To follow, is that an appropriate thing to do?
Yeah, it is very appropriate, so I, um, I referenced the pediatric sign, which I think is what you're talking about. Amber, if you're able to pull that exact approval from the pediatric sign. Area variance, I don't know when it was granted, I don't know if anyone has that institutional knowledge, I can even go as far as referencing that approval resolution.
Okay, I can take a look through the records when I'm back in the office.
Okay, thanks.
That makes sense. And then you had asked for findings, um, Charlie, on be it further resolved that the application for a sign area variance is hereby granted, subject to. And you had left a blank?
Yeah, because I thought this board wanted to talk about, um, timing of illumination of the sign.
I thought we were all in agreement that, because I feel like. They should be allowed to be late because it's still advertising when they go to the restaurant, so I was, I was gonna suggest we just say, subject to all illumination restriction imposed by the village. And that's all.
Okay.
Well, what if they don't impose, the village doesn't impose on it, can they be twenty four hours?
I, I have no problem as twenty four hours, if that's what the village allows, but I don't know.
You could just not even say anything if just compliance with the village code is, they have to do that anyway, whether or not it's a condition.
You have a problem with David, you wanted to.
I think that the, these lights and advertisements, I mean, it's, they, they wanna be found, it's one thing, but I think they would have go at it. Ten, eleven o'clock, the latest.
Yeah, I think the question came up, the pediatric sign was, uh, one of the signs was on longer. And if the pediatric sign is on longer, then this should be allowed to be on longer, and if the pediatric sign is not on longer, I would agree with you, Dave, and this shouldn't be on longer.
So, can we find that out, what, how long, the timing of the pediatric sign and make it match?
Yeah, when Amber pulls that resolution, I can add the same.
I think it was smaller than the pediatric sign, it wasn't longer. As I recall, because I remember looking into that. But go ahead and double check.
Anything else? Okay, so then let's vote, anyone wanna make a, um, a. Motion?
That we adopt the resolution with the revisions that we just cited.
Second. I'll second it. Okay, Greta.
Yes.
Meg.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so this is approved with amendments, okay, the next application. Five eight twenty twenty one, four thirteen Soundview, Greta is refused.
Yeah.
Hey, Rob, I'm gonna have to go soon, I'm.
All right, well, let's see if we can get through this really fast, because we're not voting on anything, this is just, do we have any discussion about this?
I actually do have discussion, I still don't understand why they don't need the rear, the extra variance building in the rear yard. That is a preexisting, I, I asked during the public hearing, it's a, um, it's preexisting. Nonconforming in the rear yard. And it's building a sloped roof, and I know that the architect or the applicant described how the height of the roof. You determine something about the median or the beams or something about the height, and I understood that. But she seemed to use the same argument for why this wasn't an extension of the preexisting nonconforming conformity. Because it's sloped, and I felt like it's still being built up. I, I didn't understand why we go to the mean, like, when you get to the mean of the roof, it's past where it's nonconforming, you still were extending the. The building of a structure where it was in a nonconforming yard.
I honestly would have to go back and look at the application, I don't remember specifics of your question. So if that's an issue, let's leave this for next meeting.
Okay.
We don't have the time at this point, it's late.
Yeah, and then really fast, just a point of clarification on the next one, I don't think you should spend time.
Wait, wait, if we're up to the next one, let me open it.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
So it's because it's on the public hearing, okay, so we will leave, uh, five eight twenty twenty one, four thirteen Soundview for the next meeting and before the meeting, look at. The, everybody will look at the, um, uh, application and Meg's, what Meg, the point Meg's raising. Okay, next is two S P twenty twenty four nineteen, American Avenue, okay, Meg.
It just says, the, the public hearing was closed on November five, I went back and listened to the recording, I don't think the public hearing was ever closed. We actually. And I, I went and listened to the tape, so unless it was another tape afterwards, September tenth. Show up, and we said, let's adjourn it to the next one, on November five, it came up, and, um. I, I just came up really fast, and this always, oh, did we, we were looking for clarification on whether a violation had, um, closed. Did we get that report? No, we didn't, let's move on, and we just moved to the next unit.
I, I specifically remember us disclosing the public hearing, subject to getting the answer from the building inspector about. Whether or not, so it may be it was the December, so let's go back and look at the.
Need to do research, because I went back to November five, I even went back to the end of the meeting, did we come back to it or something?
Check the December meeting.
Okay.
Let's go check that, um, okay, in that case, we're done. Oh no, I guess we have to technically adjourn the application for four sixteen waiver lease, so that's adjourned. We've just been adjourned again, okay, um, then we are done, is there a motion to, uh?
Yeah.
Adjourn. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Abby.
Yes.
You can go, Dave.
Gotta think about this, and I'll be, I'll go with Abby.
Greta.
Yep.
Uh, Meg.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't need me to say yes.
Exactly, um, and I vote yes, so this meeting is adjourned, everyone have a lovely, long, um, beginning of summer, see you, see you in July.